Regular meeting of the Fargo School Board to order. We do have an agenda in front of us. I would entertain a motion. Jim?
I move adoption of the agenda with the addition of the HR addendum that was at our workstations under item 5B.
Second. A motion's on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of proceeding with the agenda as presented tonight? Please vote by saying yes.
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 Any opposed? No. We will proceed. Staff reports, FEA reports. We have a kind of an unusual setup tonight. Nobody, is anybody here from the FEA to present? Okay, we will move forward with SRCL grant. And who would like to make introductions for that?
Tonight, we are going to look at the Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant that Fargo has received. It's a three-year grant, and we're in year two. Our, it's a very neat grant that is pre-K through 12th grade. And I will have Lisa Rosky, Susan Peterson, Kim Wrench, and Donna Johnson give you an overview.
Good evening. We have a list here of the team members who have been a part of this literacy grant from the ground up. It's been an 18-month process to get the grant, get the money, get it, our programming rolling, and it has been fast and furious ever since we applied, first applied for the grant. A little bit of background, the grant, I believe, came from leftover, no child left behind money. And they said, here, states, do some literacy work with it. And the states oversee the grant work that we do. And so, we answer to DPI, and they have hired somebody at the state level. And her sole job is to help us out with this literacy grant. We have received $1.9 million over the three years of this grant in here in Fargo. Our priority is on our greatest number of disadvantaged children. And so, we have chosen focus schools for that. We have to focus on our birth through 12th grade, all the way up, just because that was the stip, or what the stipulation of the grant. You can see the broken, or the percentages broken down there. Fifteen percent of the funds are used to serve birth through age five. And then, you can see the rest of the breakdown. Five percent of the funds for administrative costs help cover our off-contract work that we do. Our grant schools are focus schools. You can see them listed up there. Our early childhood special education in the buildings that they are located. We have eight elementary schools, Carleton Ileson Middle School, South High, and then programming at Agassi. And if you're wondering why just those schools, again, the grant was primarily for disadvantaged students. And we felt that the biggest majority of those students are in these focus schools. But we have not forgotten the rest of the school district. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner, we've established a literacy leadership team that is a district-wide effort. Right now, it's primarily comprised of people from the focus schools, but we have specialists from other buildings as well, and plans to expand that work. And we have that in place because after the three years are up, we don't want to leave the work that we've done behind. We want to keep that going and build the capacity, and that leadership group will help us do that.
Good evening. I'm Donna Johnson, and I am the Early Childhood Special Ed Administrator in Fargo. And I'm representing kind of the birth-to-five portion of the grant. So, when we look at our birth-to-five population, we've had five goals, or sorry, four goals, that we are measuring through the grant. The first one is alphabet knowledge, so students, younger students knowing their letters. The second one continues with alphabet knowledge, and it's that letter sound, so not just the letter name, but the sounds. We're working on phonological awareness as well. So, students that start to understand words that are associated with those sounds. And then, the last goal would be the writing goal. So, writing for a variety of purposes, and always begins with writing their name. So, those are our four main goals. What are our efforts to this, to this point? The first thing we did as part of the grant is reach out to community partners and establish relationships with community partners. It is really important, North Dakota does not have a public preschool, and we know that the students we serve through Early Childhood Special Ed and Even Start, which are Fargo Public Schools' early childhood population, is not going to scratch the surface on what we need to prepare kindergartners, kids for kindergarteners, so that they have those readiness skills to continue with their literacy learning. So, we've established partnerships with the NDSU Center for Child Development, with our Head Start Birth-to-Five Population, and then YWCA Child's World. So, we've formed these partnerships, and we're going with, working with them through the grant. The second portion of, the second effort of the grant was that we adopted a new curriculum, creative curriculum. Head Start was already using it. We've brought this into our Even Start and Early Childhood Special Ed population, and working with NDSU and YWCA to have those pieces in place as well. And the third part, a large portion of the grant went through professional development for our Even Start and ECSE staff, both teachers and paraprofessionals, alongside our community partners, so they've attended trainings with us. The first training was in our creative curriculum, so our new creative, our new curriculum, which really focuses, it's a exploration and creative curriculum that really works on children's exploration skills through multimodal, so social, emotional, and through physical development, and through language and literacy. So, the whole child, knowing that those foundations need to be in place for a child to learn those literacy skills. So, that was our first few sets of trainings, learning the curriculum itself. And then, we went deeper into the curriculum with learning the language and literacy pieces of creative curriculum that will support the grant. The second part of the training involved a tool called the class, which is an observational tool, which really is used to measure high-quality interactions between children and staff, knowing that we have to have those relationships to build learning too. So, it's really looking at emotional support we provide to child, classroom organization, and instructional support. So, the administrators of those programs went through observer training. And then, we brought in our staff from our community partners and Even Start and Early Childhood Special Ed, and talked about how, then what are those things we're looking for, and how can teachers and paraprofessionals and support staff bring those into not just our preschool settings, but into our daycares and our infant-toddler settings, so that we're preparing kids for that school setting. And so, what's our status so far? So, last year was the first year of the grant, and the data we collected was from our Even Start Family Literacy Program and Early Childhood Special Ed. And we found that with our efforts, 76.4% of our children that were four years old and will be kindergarten-age eligible that year gained, made significant gains in oral language during the school year. And then, with Early Childhood Special Ed, we had an 82% of our population gained skills in oral language. And so, what that really looks at, again, we measured those children that were age four and that were kindergarten-age eligible. When we go to our data this year, we're not only collecting the Even Start and ECSE data that we'll continue to collect, but we're also then going to bring in data from our community partners as well. So, really, kind of casting that wide net, so that we're improving outcomes for all child, children in our community.
I'm Lisa Rosky. I'm the Elementary Literacy Facilitator, and I'm going to share some information with you about the kindergarten to grade five work, part of this grant. We have two goals in the elementary grades that we want to accomplish by the end of next year. So, that would be our year three end, in that 100% of our students would be making at least a year's growth. And the instrument we're using to measure that is a very long title there, affectionately called the FNP, for those of us that use that. And then, we're also looking at how many of our children are reaching their end-of-grade level proficiency expectations. And by the end of the year three, our goal is 85% of those children would be at year-end proficiency. So, our efforts to date really are divided into two big chunks. One is all-around professional learning, and that's the first bullet, and then all kind of the subsets underneath that. And then, the second big chunk is the resources and the books, the stuff, to really do the work. And so, some things around the professional learning is, there has been a K-2 focus. That's where we've started our work. And so, that has involved a five-day class that's offered in the summer, and Susan will talk a little bit more about the details around the class. But really focusing on what do the leading experts in the field say best practice in literacy instruction should look like? And so, our teachers have been very immersed in that work. But what we've discovered is that's really just the tip of the iceberg. That's almost the easiest part. The hard work is phase two, what we're doing right now. How do we do that work in the classroom every day with all of our kiddos? So, that ongoing professional learning community conversation, the ongoing coaching, all of that work that sustains what they learned in the summer. And then, we have spent a significant amount of resource money to improve our bookroom collections, high-quality literature, both fiction and nonfiction, that our children can have access to every day.
I'm Susan Peterson, Reading Recovery Teacher Leader, and I'm going to share just a little bit more about our professional learning effort in our Circle Grant. So, this past summer, there were two cohorts of teachers totaling 85 classroom teachers, specialists, EL teachers, special education, Title I reading teachers. So, many of the teachers that work with our kindergarten through second-grade population in specific, and they attended a five-day training. The first two days were on assessment, and then, the last part of the class was about best practices in small-group literacy instruction. And so, how they can really target the individual needs of the students in their class, and then help to move them forward. So, to support teachers in this effort of working with their students in small group, we have the phase-two part, which Lisa talked a little bit about. But more specifically, each team of teachers that came to the training over the summer are meeting with Lisa and I, then, in professional learning communities, looking at student data, and thinking about what next steps are for instruction. They also participate in two half-day, ongoing professional learning opportunities with Lisa and I, that we just review and rethink things from the summer. They have students in front of them now, so now, they can take what they learned that was theoretical in the summer and put it to practice with real kids. And then, we also work closely with student performance strategists, the coaches, in order to support them in their work with the teachers in, in developing their skills with early readers. So, that's one part. That's where we are so far with the professional learning effort. And in order for teachers to do this good work with their students, they need to have the materials. So, the rest of the, well, not the rest, but a large part, then, has also gone to professional books and also guided reading materials, so that they have the materials that they need to support their readers.
And that is middle school is next. I'm Kim Wrench, the Middle Level Language Arts Facilitator, and also Gifted Services Facilitator. We have four goals at Carleton Ileson, but I'm going to skip over this because you'll see the goal as well as some data matching that in the next slide after this. Some of our efforts include a literacy lens audit, and we actually did that K through 12 last year because we weren't sure where to start. We knew we had some work to do. We didn't know where to start, and so, that audit helped us really narrow down our focus into the work that we should do. And then, that audit was run by Dr. Angela Perry. It looks like Perry, but it's Perry. And she came back, she had done the audit with a team, and then, she came back and did some writing-to-learn strategies, professional learning with our staff at both CBE and South. We also did some PLC work in looking at student writing and analyzing that for growth with Mark Anischeck from Adalai Stevenson in, or near Chicago. And then, we have added team libraries in order to promote reading. We have books all over the school building now, and kids really excited in being the team librarians and getting those books out to their classmates. We have tied some of our school improvement work into this grant, and so, we have done literacy-based peer observations. So, I have the observation tool that they look for, different literacy strategies in place. And so, we've been keeping data on how many of those we see. And then, also, we have PLC leaders in place, and they help us to analyze student writing. So, our first goal is to have all of our teachers listed there. Core EL and Special Ed teachers train in a system-wide disciplinary literacy strategies, and that's the work that we're doing with Dr. Angela Perry. And we have had to break that group into three cohorts, and so, we started last year with Cohort One, our Language Arts, our Social Studies, Science, and then, our ILC teacher there. And then, this year, we're adding in Cohorts Two and Three, and then, deepening some of the work with Cohort One. I won't read this entire slide here, but the second goal is that 70% of our ELs, BED, and low-income students make at least one year's growth. This is from our reading inventory test that our students do three times a year at Carleton Ileson. And I broke it into our demographic groups, and you can see that we're, we're close to that 70% in the majority of our, our areas there, our demographic groups. So, we made good growth according to RI. And if I were a better statistician, I would tell you why it looks different from RI to MAP. Our scores there are a little bit lower. Again, I won't go through all of these. If you wanted access to these slides, we're happy to share them with you. But you can see there are different ethnicity groups, not quite at that 70% mark. And again, last year was our first year during this. We wouldn't expect that we're going to make leaps and bounds improvement yet. Again, ethnicity groups in grade six, seven, and now, here's eight. So, we are not close yet to 70%. This is broken into EL, our socioeconomic, the low socioeconomic group, measured by the free and reduced lunch. And then, our special education group, still, again, not quite there with our 70%. There's grade six, that was grade seven, grade eight, again, not there with our 70%. So, we have some work to do. By the end of grade eight, Goal Three is that we want 70% of our eighth graders reading at a proficient level, at grade level. Measured on that RI again, 64.88% of our students were proficient last year, and then, 61.86% of our eighth graders were proficient. And if you look at MAP, those numbers are a little bit lower. The numbers here that would be really important would be in the upper right-hand corner, across from the grade level. So, this is the same cohort group. They just left us last year to go on to South. In the sixth grade, 50% of them were proficient, went down a little bit to 49%, and as I say, were seventh graders, and then bounced back up to 53%. So, why there's such a huge discrepancy between MAP and RI, I have some suspicions, but I couldn't tell you exactly why. But you can see that this makes my job a lot of fun, to decide, decide if we've met our goals. And then, our last goal for Carleton Ileson is that 100% of our staff will contribute to a literacy-rich environment. We've got our PLC leaders in place, helping us look at our essential learning outcomes and making sure that our students are making growth, especially in their writing. In course-like groups, we're working on proficiency scales, so we know what we're measuring. And then, everybody has access to the 21st Century rubrics, and also, the Metro Writing rubrics, and we use those to measure our growth. And then, we have our Marzano evaluations are tied to the use of scales and rubrics in the classroom. At the high school level, we've recently made some changes to their goals. The first one is that 100% of teachers instructing in the contents you see there will implement writing prompts. And actually, it's the entire school, from the JR OTC teachers to PE teachers, everybody. It's all hands-on deck over at South to implement writing in that building and making sure that students are writing a little bit each week in their classes. And then, the second goal there is that 80% of the targeted population will be proficient, and the targeted population is targeted by the Circle Grant. And that population will be proficient in writing tasks measured by the shared school rubric. It's a little bit more difficult in high school to measure their reading because they do a different assessment. And so, one of the things that we're trying to do is find some kind of way to measure their reading progress over time and have some kind of a shared assessment that they use in each grade level. In the meantime, though, we'll use our writing. Again, they went through the literacy lens audit. They're working with Dr. Perry. They worked with Mark Anischeck. They have a school-wide reading program now where they set aside time by content area per day. So, every day, kids get about 20 minutes of choice and independent reading time, which has been shown to increase the level of engagement in reading. And this is working, and we know this because the librarian took some data from her circulation from last year to this year, and it's up over 500 books. So, over 500 more books are being taken out of the library from over last year. And when you walk through the hallways, every kid has a novel tucked into their, their pile of books. There are some content areas that are working to tie novels into their curricula. So, these novels would fit in and engage students in learning about, say, history or some kind of a period in time that would be covered in their social studies classroom. And then, they have that school-wide writing expectation that I've already talked about. It's a little more difficult to measure the status because that one goal did just change. We were going to try to measure it with essential learning outcomes, and it was difficult to do that because we had so many different essential learning outcomes. But what we decided to do instead is narrow down a rubric and make it quick and easy to use, and take a lot of snapshots of student writing over time. So, we'll be looking at this next semester and checking in to see what their writing scores are based on this rubric, to see if they'll make growth for next year. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Brandy?
I do have a question. So, I know, I understand that there's certain elementary schools, but what happens if there's a child that's, that needs help in a different elementary school that's not offered by this particular program? Do, is this just, I mean, do they get to participate still? I mean, are they bused to that school? Or like, how does that?
Right now, we're working on building capacity in our teachers and trying to find out what's really going to work for our disadvantaged populations, and then, we're going to be using that. And we really do now with our literacy leadership team. And then, the nice thing about having facilitators is that we travel around to the different buildings. So, we can say, hey, you know what's been working over at Carleton Ileson? Let's give it a try here. I recommend this book. This has been a great book for us to use over there. So, really, we haven't left too many kids behind. Also, there's another iteration of this grant, and I don't recall the name of it, but we could start applying for it next year, cross our fingers. We'll get that, and then, we can expand out to the other parts of town.
Awesome. Thank you. David?
Donna, you had a couple of, you had a percentage of 76.4% for Even Start and 82.8% for Early Childhood. Was that, were those numbers the number that showed growth or that achieved a goal?
Those were the numbers that showed growth.
Okay.
On our fall benchmark and spring benchmark.
Okay. Do you have the figures prior to this grant, so we could see how much the growth has?
I do not.
Okay.
I can look for it, but I, at this point, I don't believe we have.
I'd, I'd like to see that, so we could kind of track the growth like we saw in that one graph of yours, going back to 2016.
And how we measured them last year was through, we created a common form of assessment, a common formative assessment. This year, we, as part of the grant, applied to a national database, which is called Teaching Strategy Schools, which goes along with the Creative Program. So, we'll be using that as our benchmark collection as well. So, the numbers may be a little different from last year and this year, but now, we have a standardized tool.
No, thank you. I really, I appreciated what you gave us.
I have a couple of questions, and as you answer, maybe step to the mic so everybody at home can hear us. So, you, you mentioned this is a $1.9 million grant for three years. Is it 1.9 total or 1.9 every year? That's my first question.
It's broken down, yes. It's 1.9 all total, and it's, it was a bigger chunk last year, a slightly smaller chunk, and then, next year will be even smaller. But we can have carryover, so up to a certain percentage.
Okay. My next question is probably related to Brandy's. So, how does this relate to the Read 180 program that we do in schools? Does it, does it contribute to that? Is it, maybe?
I'm going to pass this along to Bob Gross.
Good move.
To answer the first question of the, the amount for each year, year one was $860,000. Year two is $530,000, and then, $580,000 for the third year of that grant implementation. And as we look at Read 180 at the middle school and the high school, or reading recovery, or Title I services at the elementary school, I see those as really some of our more intensive interventions for students, programs or specific interventions, where what we're trying to do through the grant is provide professional development for staff. So, yes, we still want to have those very intensive interventions for the students who have been identified for Read 180, reading recovery, or Title I. But we also want to then provide a very rich and robust professional development for all the staff in those buildings, so that tier-one instruction will be strengthened as well. So, I think they go hand-in-hand. And one of the other slides that were up a little bit earlier, we're talking about some of the efforts that we have across the district, from our essential learning outcomes to our PLC leaders, to creating some of those common formative assessments. All of these things are aligned and pointing in the same direction.
That makes complete sense. Thank you. Any other questions for our presenters? Thank you for all your work. Have a nice evening. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent report. Dr. Gandhi?
Sure. Just one quick thing. We, as a district, are starting to communicate our State of the Schools and Public Focus Group event. This year, it'll be held on January 7th from 6:00 to 8:15 p.m. at South High School. The focus for this year is really going to be around the district's MTSSB and social, emotional, learning five-year plan. Really, that's going to be the theme of our State of the Schools and Public Focus Group, specifically around three, three different measures that the districts can implement over the next five years. One is restorative practices, one is trauma-sensitive schools, and then, just a general discussion around social, emotional curriculum that we're embedding into the school day for students at all levels. And really, parents will have an opportunity to learn a little bit about each of those districts, each of those initiatives coming through our district, but then, also provide feedback on what is their level of comfort and what is their knowledge base around each of those topics. So, as we start rolling those out, that will help us with our implementation and communication plan. So, it'll begin January 7th from 6:00 to 8:15 at South High School. And as always, I am sure Ms. Campbell will give you your assigned duties as that time approaches.
Very good. Thank you. A recognition of the audience. We have two members that have signed up to present to the board. I get to read a little statement here before you begin, but let's see here. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and address for the record. We would also ask that speakers refrain from using this form to criticize or complain about a specific employee by name. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or debate issues in this forum. Should you desire a written response to a specific question, you may request it. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of five minutes. Our first speaker is Brenda Reel. Brenda? There she comes. Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you. Do you need my address, or you got that?
I have that.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. I have a prepared statement, so I'm going to follow that, but I prefer conversations for those of you that know me. So, I know that there's been a lot of time and attention and expense and focus on visiting Minnesota Level Four schools, and as to the design of what Fargo's Level D building is going to look like. So, one of the things that I wanted to look at is, I wanted to look at some of the programs and services, and I know that you're going to address some of those tonight. So, one of the first things that I looked at, and through public information and what was in the board materials for tonight, is staffing. And so, I think I have it correct, but if I don't, I know someone will correct me. So, when I looked at Fargo's materials, it appears that in the general ed, there's going to be one existing teacher, three new general ed for four teachers, for special ed, two existing, and I assume that means you're pulling it from the pool you have, and then, two new ones, two existing paras, and then, eight. two new ones, two existing paras, and then eight new paras. And that's at the maximum of 64 students. So I totaled that to be four general ed, four sped, and 10 paras. So then I went over to the four Minnesota schools and pulled their data. And so what I found was that in Cora High School with 71 students, they have 14.68 teachers, and that's a ratio of one teacher for 4.84 students. And when I looked at the Good House sped, which I believe is the red wing one, they have more students, 134. Their ratio is one to five. They have 26.46 teachers and 16.39 paras. So then I went to, is it Pancollo? I always pronounce that incorrect. They have 81 students. Their ratio is 3.1 students for every teacher. They have 26.09 teachers. And Carner Blue has 106 students. Their ratio is one teacher to 4.18 students. They have a total of 25.36 full-time teachers. So I bring that up. We all know there's a workforce issue. And I bring that up because there is a program here in Madison this year. And what, what parents and advocates have been told is that there was not one special ed teacher willing to take the position in this specialized classroom with three students, not one. And they tried to recruit, and there was not a teacher found to be available. So I just wonder where the teachers are going to come from, because if they don't want to come from existing and you can't hire from outside. And I don't say that's your fault, that there's a workforce. There's a workforce all over our country for special ed teachers and teachers, and especially in North Dakota. So then I looked at, and the last information I had, and again, this was told to me last week by someone affiliated with Fargo Public Schools, there were 18 unfilled para positions. So where will the eight new paras come from? Plus, you're going to pull two paras from a group that you already are short 18. So when I looked at it, it calls for a new BCBA. And for those of you that don't deal with it every day, that's a board-certified behavioral person. So some people may know who Dr. Paul Coastal is, some people may not. Paul is the Director of Psychology and Clinical Director at the Life Skills and Transition Center. He is also responsible for all of the BCBA's and all the human service centers in the entire state of North Dakota. We refer to Paul as the godfather of BCBA because he's done more work in that area in the state for many years, including with the legislation. So I got an email from Paul yesterday, because I work with him all the time. He said, "I'm actively recruiting for two additional BCBA's for the Fargo area. So if anyone knows of interested people in training or otherwise might be interested, it takes an average of two years of recruiting to find a candidate, and they're frequently in the process of finishing their credentials, classes, and supervised experience. So if you know of anybody, let me know." So he sent that out to a lot of the adult DED services. So where are you going to get a BCBA? Because it isn't, again, not just a problem here. We've got a statewide problem with BCBA's. And I work, and I know it may seem like I spend all my time at schools, but I also work with the adult population. So yesterday, I was in a meeting with an adult provider talking about a young adult that we needed to get three hours a day of services for three weeks. And so we were meeting with Solutions because they're helpful, they work in both worlds. And, well, not sure that's going to happen because all of their trained folks are in schools. And not only they're in schools, but she said, "We're already short-staffed. We can't really staff all the contracts we already have." So when I go to a provider meeting and I hear that Solutions is going to be a provider, you can write a contract with anybody, but do you have the people to actually come in and provide the contracted services? Because it's billable hours, so if they come, they get paid; if they don't, they don't. But our kids, and just as importantly, the teachers and paras are left hanging. So then I happened to be over at another provider to talk about getting a job coach for a high school kid I work with. And I had just learned that, and I only bring this up because West Fargo and Fargo are so close together, that West Fargo said at their board meeting last night, they were going to contract with CLS for job coaches. I work with CLS all the time. So I said, "Hey, you got some job coaches? You know, Brenda, we're working on that one?" I said, "Well, that's not the one I'm really talking about." I said, "I understand you're going to contract with West Fargo for job coaches." "Yeah." I said, "Do you have them?" "Well, we're recruiting and we're hiring, and you know how that goes." So again, you're going to have job coaches, but are you really going to have job coaches? And so when I look at those pretty drawings, and God knows, that's a beautiful building, I thought, "Well, you know what? I want to look and see what are programs and services. I want to look at the design of the program. I want to look at the development of the program. You know, where can I find that?" Well, you're talking about it tonight, but I can't put my hands on it. And so then today, I had, I mean, the drawings are great, but, so today, I went up to Greg Steele and Trail. Because the special ed director who I've worked with for a long time said, "I want you to come up and look at what I'm doing." I said, "Okay." So another person from my office and I went up there. And so she showed us what she's doing. She showed us, we were in a room with kids who kick and spit, and they are aggressive, and they swear, and they break things, and they do all the things that the kids that are being proposed to go to your Level D school are doing. They're in a room, and this is not a pretty school. This is an old school up in Mayville. I saw an incredible program. I saw incredible staff. I saw kids, and some of those kids I worked with, and trust me, a year ago, they weren't where they were today. They're not separated, they're right in their school. They go back and forth. Some kids spend most of their day in this room. And this room, it's an old room, but the sensory part, they've turned it into a great sensory room. And I said to Mary Stamen, the special ed director, I said, "So how much does this cost?" She said, "Ah, I had to buy," you know, those kids like those TP tents. And she said, "It cost me a new para and a new teacher." Then I went to the principal's office and said, "So hey, how does this affect you?" And he goes, "You know what? I've not sent one kid home this year. I don't spend my days calling parents, intervening in behavior problems. I can now be a principal." He said, "So I love it. I just don't know why we didn't do it before."
Brenda, if you can close it down.
Sure. So the last thing I want to say is I know that you have a letter from a lawyer that says you can do this. And beginning in 1910 in the state of North Dakota, we put kids at Grafton State School for education and residential placement. And for 70 years, no, everybody said, "You can do that. It's fine. It's fine." Well, in 1980, there were five parents, and one of them was Sidney Black, whose son was a Fargo Public School kid. And those five great parents sued the state of North Dakota. And if you look for a citation, that's the most cited case in the state of North Dakota. It took five parents to say, "We're done. Even though your attorney general and all the lawyers all over the country tell you you can do this, we're telling you you can't." And the federal judge agreed. So I really think you need to look at programs and services. You need to look at supporting your teachers and your paras, because that's where the, that's the most important resource. And you don't need to spend $11 million on a segregated building. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker who's signed up to address the board is Katie Barnum. Welcome, Katie.
My name is Katie Barnum. I'm at 3696 Polk Street South, and I have two children who attend Fargo Public Schools. I've read the plans for the new Lewis and Clark Explorer Academy, the Level D school, and I have some questions about the highlights for this separate school. One of the things mentioned was flexible seating. Some of the elementary classrooms in Fargo Public Schools already have flexible seating options, which is actually a 21st century classroom design that benefits all students. There are general education classrooms, which actually have more flexible seating options than the Level C autism program at Madison. Why doesn't Fargo Public Schools plan to bring flexible seating to all classrooms, but certainly to all special education classrooms and resource rooms that already exist to benefit the majority of the students in special education now? This shouldn't be an option that's specific only to a separate building. Child-centered environment was mentioned. All Fargo Public Schools should have a child-centered environment that fosters academic, social, and personal growth in students. Individualized instruction based on IEP goals and objectives. Isn't this what every student with an IEP, an individualized education plan, should have, regardless of which school they attend? This is part of IDEA. This isn't specific to a separate building. Social-emotional skills taught directly or daily in small groups or one-on-one. This is already being provided to many students in special education per their IEPs. This is based on a child's need, and if it, if it isn't working for a specific student, the curriculum and the manner in which it is taught should be changed, not the building in which it's being taught in. Check-in and check-out daily. Again, this could be a part of any child's IEP and provided in their current placement. This isn't a plan that would be specific to a separate building. The STEAM focus, this is something that should be available to all students as part of their IEP as needed. I was told last spring that STEM would be a part of my son's new autism program at Madison before agreeing to move my son to the program. His general education curriculum couldn't be stretched far enough to meet his needs and maintain his interest. It has not yet been provided. Why aren't the resources being put into creating STEM and project-based learning for the students who were already told they would have it, but they don't yet? Sensory rooms? There are currently sensory rooms in existing Fargo Public School buildings. What is being done to ensure that the current sensory rooms have the appropriate items for the children who use them? If there are resources to purchase all the needed sensory items in a Level D school, why isn't this being done for the kids now? Why doesn't Fargo Public Schools put the resources into sensory room items in neighborhood schools to benefit the majority of the students in special education so that they can be successful? A building designed to support de-escalation. A building doesn't help children de-escalate. It's the people who will help the children de-escalate. When the people don't have appropriate training, they don't have an understanding of the child, the disability, the needs, the IEP. They don't have a positive relationship with the child. And when there's not enough people to provide all the supports in the IEP, the building won't matter. If they have no contact with their peers who are not in special education, the building won't matter. The quality of the people in a child's life and the genuine relationships that they have, that's what matters. Your plan for a separate school states that you have an existing K through five special education teacher who will move into a new separate school, and you won't need to hire for one of those positions. Then why is there a Level C program that doesn't have a special education teacher right now? Appropriate programming should be in place for my son now. He's one of just three kids in the new autism program. If Fargo Public Schools hasn't been able to provide my son and other students with appropriate support and programming, how can parents trust that we'll all of a sudden be there when there's a new separate building? Why aren't our kids getting the appropriate support and programming now? Why aren't resources being put into the current programs to help children succeed in their least restrictive environment with their peers? Why should students feel like they have to be put in a separate school to receive the resources, support, and programming that's in their IEP now that they should have been getting all along? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will move on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion. Jim?
I move adoption of the consent agenda with the addition of the HR addendum, and I'm sad to see Carol Shallow retiring.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor, please vote by saying yes.
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 Any opposed? No. Consent agenda is approved. Since we kind of have a unique presenter, presenting panel tonight, we will take a little bit of break so we can reconfigure where people are sitting. So let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. And I invite the presenters to take their places where their name tags are. Thank you. And I think I want the board to truly know that. If there are concerns with the legal obligations of the spectrum of special education
If there are concerns with the legal obligations of the spectrum of special educations that we are required to provide under IDA, those are conversations that need to happen at the federal level. But I do want to make it very, very clear that today, you have the right as a board to scrutinize and question and challenge any administrative proposal. Challenge us on our process. Challenge us on the project and how it relates to what we are trying to do as a district in our strategic plan. That is in the board's purview. Do not challenge the intent. Do not challenge the qualifications of our staff. Because if you do, I would say that as board members, go spend a day with our staff that deal on a daily basis with students who are not in the right learning environment and have to go home saying, "I wish I could do more for this student. Come back the next day and then do it all over again." There are students that need something more. There are students that will benefit. There are students across our system that they come into our district with a requirement or a need that we are unable to fulfill. And that's not about the qualification levels of our staff at all. That is not about the intent. No one goes and becomes an educator saying, "I don't want to help a certain kid." That's just not true. And if you feel that way, then I would say go spend a day, have a conversation with them. So really want to just provide that context for you, completely open to questions and challenges on our proposal, but please don't challenge our staff. Don't challenge our intent, because if you do, then I would really ask you to reflect on why people become educators. And with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to our special ed department to talk about the programming and services of the project we're proposing.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. I am going to have the Assistant Director, Allison Keen, begin by explaining what a typical day would look like in this setting. I will move on to some questions and answers session that we went through with Family Educator Enhancement Team, and then we'll have Mr. Kressup talk about some of the information gathering and sharing that he did with some stakeholders. So, Mrs. Keen, if you want to begin.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I think the easiest way to go through this, as Patty said, was to kind of talk about what does a day really look like at the Lewis and Clark Explorer Academy. And going forward, this is what our vision is, and then how do we put that in place? The day would start, just like any other school, and we want to keep that very typical routine, because our goal is to have every one of these students return to their home school. So by keeping typical routines, building stamina, self-regulating behavior, by doing all those things, it speeds up our goal and our process to get our students back to where they want to be and where they need to be, and that's their home school. So they start out. They come in by bus, by special transportation. They're dropped off by their parents, just like every other school. They're greeted at the door by staff, and from there, they go to a check-in. And they check in for not only do they have what they need academically, but also socially, emotionally, physically. Do they have their things? Are they hungry? Did they sleep last night? Did they have a bad start to their day? Staff are on hand, and when we have the ratio, and I know it talks about teaching staff ratio, we have like one case manager per every six students. We also have available to us school psychologists, speech-language pathologists, OTPTs available that will be there in the building, administrators that will all work together as a team to greet the students to come into the day, to make sure that they're there to start it. Now, throughout the day, it will look a lot like a typical day. There will be time for academics. There will be time for large motor. There will be time for lunch and recess. But during that flexible day, and with the staff that we have, if students are struggling or they need a different type of learning, the staff will be able to take them to a smaller group. They will be able to go out to have a movement break. They have sensory rooms available. They're not waiting for other kids maybe to have to take their turn, whereas in our building, we may have one sensory room for quite a few students. Here, the number of students is much lower, and so they have greater access. When we talk about being child-centered, we really talk about having that individual education, and we can do that, but we also know that many of our students, they may like one thing, like trains. They can take that curriculum then and adapt that curriculum to focus on counting trains, multiplying trains, talking about mileage, doing all those different things. Then also, we talked about the STEAM, and we know that many of our students enjoy the robotics piece. They enjoy coding. They enjoy learning about electricity and all those different pieces. When you have things right on hand that are available just to you and not needed to be checked out from a library or someplace else that they're there, that's readily available, staff will have that. They can go and work individually with students rather than a classroom or a smaller group. Also, throughout the day, if a student struggles, mental health contracts will be available to come in and support. So they'll be right there. All the services are pushed into them. Students do not have to go anywhere. They do not have to go down the hallway. Speech-language would come in and interact naturally during the classroom time. Mental health services would come in and interact naturally during their classroom time, building those social skills, building those self-regulation skills to allow those students to learn at the pace that they're ready to learn. At the end of the day, kind of the same thing. They check back out. So how did they do today? Do they have everything they need to go home? And what does that look like for, are they ready for the next day? The schedule's very flexible. It's also a very safe place if students can come and go, but there's also areas that with the key code access, staff can get in and out and quickly let students in and out of places, so the flow moves very easily. Also, I know on one of our tours, one of the building principals talked a lot about being able to calm a whole building. And that's part of that, the lighting and the different design that this building will offer. And she noted that, you know, many times, like a holiday week, students are maybe worried about something going home, or they might be really excited Halloween, those kind of things, and it's sometimes hard to regulate the day. She talked to us about how in their building, they could dim the lights across the whole building. So when the students came in, the whole building went calm. There was soft music playing across, and the students kind of gradually went in and went about their day. And she said often that they can just kind of calm a building or calm in areas needed. Also, within some of the sensory areas, we noted some really unique technology where students can self-choose some lighting and music to what helps them calm individually. And all these pieces are design elements that they can add into a location that can help students. It's very hard to spread that out to every building and to every sensory room in every classroom. Also, the building itself is divided up into different pods, and those pods, students would be with the teacher based on like their needs and their age level. So we would keep some of the younger students together and then more middle elementary together. And so the pods would be placed out by age and grade and kind of their needs. And that also helps then staff be more localized, and you can, I don't know, just do a better job of collaborating together when you're working with a smaller group of students. At the end of the day, you know, like I said, they'd be transported home, and communication would be made with parents, given the low numbers of students to the staff. And it's really a team focus, very collaborative, where all of the, you know, adults in that building really get to know every child, and so anybody can kind of pick up and work with kids and move forward if there's concerns or issues.
Jenny?
So, we held a Family Educator Enhancement Team meeting jointly with West Fargo. As most of you know, we've been working with West Fargo to create a cohesive plan. The current plan out there is for Fargo to start with the elementary setting. The question-and-answer session, we had a lot of great questions from parents and other stakeholders about what this program means. One of the first things that we wanted to be clear about is that it is a Level D setting. There's no doubt about that. The function of being able to have it, this school, the Explorer Academy, closed off from the rest of the building makes it so. The good, or the thing that helps us extend as we move from students who, as Allison talked about, returning back to a different setting, is there is an opportunity to stay in the same building area and move into Lewis and Clark School for the student to experience more time with regular education peers. So that feature, I think, is a very unique feature from what we saw in the settings down in the cities and in Good Hugh. They were separate standing buildings. So we can begin that process of reintegrating with peers in a more, an easy way without a lot of transportation issues to block that. So this would be a Setting D. You might ask the question, "How many settings are there?" Through the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act, as we, Brenda had mentioned, there are legal parts of this, and this is a legal consideration. Schools are, districts are mandated to be able to provide the full continuum of services. So it goes from, no matter if you call them like an A through H, as North Dakota does, it could be labeled 1, 2, 3 in another state. A, B, and C, those settings, the students have, special education students have access to typical peers. Once you move beyond that, D becomes a separate school. That means that there is limited or no access to typical peers, and then it'll move to residential setting, homebound setting, correctional facility, and parentally placed in private education. So all of those continuum of services are laid out in the Act for IDEA, and districts, again, are required to provide those. We have had students arrive in our districts that require a Setting D, and we were not able to provide it. So another question would be, would this look like, or could this be done in all schools? As you'll learn and probably already know, it can't be scalable to every school building. And while a building does not in itself de-escalate a child, the environment allows adults to be able to manage and help themselves remain in, to some level of control, that will help de-escalate the child. I would say that it's more than just support. It's alongside of the great working adults that we have with these students. This would be, this program would be more than a, its whole is bigger than the sum of its parts, in other words. The different, as Allison talked about, a focus on STEAM and the individualized needs of the students would be provided. We were planning on partnering and have secured partnership with TNT Fitness, and they will be something that we can look at, that motor movement, sensory provisions that these students need. We don't anticipate starting with a huge number of students. We do have fewer than 10 that we know of. Throughout the time of my being in this district, I would say that on average, we have about three students who move in and move out that come with a Setting D in their IEP. We have had parents asked, "Why don't you have that program?" At the Family Educator Enhancement Team meeting, they asked about the reset rooms and concern about seclusion. There would be no doors on those rooms. They are truly meant for students to be able to go out and seek their own special spot when they need it, and others, they're still right there with the adults, but they have that ability to choose that calming space if so needed, much like you or I might choose to go back to our office sometime when we've had just about enough of the world. So the IEP team are the members of the team who would decide the appropriate setting. We do that for every student, whether the decision ends up being a Setting D or an A, and like I said, all the way through H. We go through a least restrictive environment talking points. So we'll talk about the characteristics of the student, previous placements tried, programmatic components, and potential harmful effects to the student, him or herself, or to others. All of that goes combined to make any decision for any student in any placement. So students would not just be placed there. IEP teams would make that decision. And just as much as they would make that decision that if they did select a Setting D for one moment, they may in the future go back and select C or B or A at some time. Parents, and as we know and have heard tonight, not everybody is on board with this, and not all of the times, even without our Setting D, do we have total agreement between parents and the district, and that is why there is a parental rights that are in place through IDEA. So while we all would recognize that we would like to solve things at the local level, there are provisions in place for parents to seek the ability to go to the Department of Public Instruction and question the choice of an IEP team. So, and those are available to all, not just Setting, the students who would be placed in Setting D. There have been questions about how to fill the position. Yes, Fargo now has felt the shortage of teachers. We are working diligently to build mentorship programs, new higher trainings, a series of new higher trainings, working with Mr. Andring's HR department on actively recruiting teachers for this school. It is different than what Fargo has been used to in the past. We used to be a destination district, and just like every other district in the nation, now we are feeling that shortage. So we will have to look at recruitment regardless of the Setting D, and have already begun to do so. We would not be changing any of our Level Cs that are currently out there. This isn't to, by putting a D does not mean that Level C students don't exist. There has to be the continuum. So we would continue to work building those programs and working to also put efforts into A and B and C, just like we do every year. So this program does not take away from other programs. Mr. Kressup?
So, I was asked to speak, just kind of about my own journey. I found, we had conversations last spring about this, and certainly when this came up to me, I had questions, I'm sure like anybody has questions. And I would say that on that journey, I have had questions answered in timely manners and in a way that really makes me feel comfortable about this being, you know, adjacent to Lewis and Clark Elementary. Dr. Gandhi and Mrs. Idness and Dr. Gross have all been out and visited with myself on multiple occasions, as well as Jim Free, and they have allowed me and my staff input to the design and answer questions. We have a Google document that the staff can ask questions on, and I've been upkeeping that and answering questions. And if I don't know, I find the right person who does know the answer to them and respond to them. And so, you know, and I would say that there's probably been five or six questions onto that document. They came out, again, district leadership came out to one of my staff meetings and presented. Staff had many good questions that were presented, and again, all questions were answered. And I would say that since then, I've only had a handful of questions, again, that I've asked them to put on that Google document, and we've answered them. But it's been really great communication for me and, again, making my staff and myself feel comfortable. Again, district leadership came out to one of my PTA meetings that we had and allowed parents their voices to be heard, and again, lots of great questions asked at the PTA. And again, our district leadership answered those questions, and I have not heard any other questions since that time from the parent perspective. And so that's kind of been my journey. Again, we are continuing to talk, and when I have questions, I, again, I visit with district leadership, and they've been more than open and honest in their approaches to myself and staff and parents of Lewis and Clark. So at this point, you know, my questions really have been answered, and I'm sure there will be more as we move closer if this gets approved, and we'll tackle those as they come. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next group to present to the board would be about the physical space, and so YHR Architects. Architects. You have the floor.
Hello, I'm Mark Lundberg from YHR Partners and I'll walk you through the plans we have for this project. We've worked with district leadership and staff and we also went on tours of Pancallo School and have looked into those schools and know some of the issues there. We did some space program to kind of figure out the amount of space we needed for this program and for the, for the school. I'll walk through some of the design considerations. I won't read all this, but we have some, we'll highlight some of these design considerations. We have pictures in here of TNT's sensory gym that they have and some other sensory rooms as for examples you'll see there. This shows a site plan at Lewis and Clark of the school. The blue area, the north is to the left. The blue area is the new construction. It's kind of on the south side of Lewis and Clark, kind of connected to where the existing cafeteria, lunchroom, and the kitchen is. So, the bus loop is on that west side comes in. There would be the existing playground on the east side, it's kind of the southeast of Lewis and Clark would stay where it is. On the south side of the, the new addition would be the parking and staff and visitor parking for the Setting D area. And then the main entry would be on the south side. On the north side, there's, the bus loop would remain there. There would be a student entry and then there'd be an entry for TNT and their area, separate from that. And then that bus loop that remains at, at Lewis and Clark would stay there. On the far west side, there's a parking lot for TNT. The next slide. This shows kind of an overall floor plan of Lewis and Clark. The blue area is the existing school, I mean, the, the green areas, the existing school. The blue areas there are, that would be the areas that would be considered the Setting D areas. So, that area would be separated, separated off from the existing school building. The tan area would be the areas, that was the, the sensory gym for TNT Kids Fitness and they have their own entry. Wrong way. I'll get into more detail here on the floor plan. So, we've developed the floor plan here and I'll, I'll get the pointer here. So, basically, there's going to be two pods, basically, of classrooms. Can we call them classroom commons areas? There's four classrooms in each side, each one. In each, there's two classrooms that share a teacher's office. So, there's a teacher's office that would be in the middle here and they would share, they would kind of span between the two classrooms. So, a teacher could go between the two classrooms from that office. Each classroom would have its own toilet room accessible from the classroom. And then we were talking about the little reset rooms, we call them, or would be right off of the classrooms. No doors on those. That would be an area for a student to go when they're in the classroom, to have a quiet space. Like at Pancallo and Carner Blue, we would have a little window in there, kind of low for the students to look out, just for the students. The classrooms would have a heated floor so kids could sit on the floor in those areas. So, each one of those classroom areas, there's four classrooms, would open into a common area in the middle. So, if students had to go out, get out of the classroom, they could go out into that common area in the middle and out there with staff and do some more education or just get out of the classroom, they could do that. And off that common area, there's each, each classroom pod has a sensory room. So, kids could go in there and they could control that environment. There'd be special lighting, special, like you saw in my picture, I had previously special objects in there that the kids could control and go there to, you know, de-escalate or do their own thing in that space. Each one, and then off of that, there's small group rooms for individualized instruction. Off of that, off of that, there's two rooms off of each classroom commons and then a kind of a conference room, also a kind of a larger small group room. Off of that classroom commons, off of each end, there's a calming room, sort of like the, the reset room off of that commons area. So, we have kind of three of those kind of rooms that are inside, they're inside each one of the classrooms and there's also one out in the commons area. So, these, these classroom pods, there's one here and one over here. The one on this side was intended for the, to start out with the elementary level. The one on the west side, on the left, would be middle school level. The main entry is in the middle here and then the, the red area is the administrative offices. So, there'd be a secure entry there, administrative offices. There's spots for itinerant staff, staff lounge, toilets, workroom, things like that in the middle. The, the perimeter sort of of the, the Setting D is kind of this. So, then these areas up here would be kind of shared areas with Lewis and Clark Elementary School. So, the sensory gym, the cafeteria, this area, this gym area, we've got a half court gym. We kind of intended those to be shared. So, the secure kind of perimeter of the Setting D would go around that. The, the hallways you'll see kind of wind around, we have those intentionally, they're kind of intentional so they don't, you don't look directly outside. So, a student could get out into the hallway and they wouldn't see out the door or see outside to kind of bolt for the door. Those are kind of things that happen. So, we intentionally kind of made the hallways not straight. Off of that main hallway, there's, out on the, the west, the west end of this, there's a, we call a care team area. So, if a student has to go to that area, they, they go there to calm down and if they, they have to leave the school building, we have a, a care team exit, we call it, like a garage where a student could have, be taken away from the school. If they have to leave the school, they could be, done that, do that in a secured room, garage space. So, there's a door that would control it. Up over here, this is where TNT would have a sensory gym. The sensory gym for TNT would have access off its own lobby and its own office off of a door here, but also would have access over here for students from the Setting D side. So, the Setting D students would use this during the day. TNT would run that program and then at night and on weekends, TNT could run their programming out of the sensory gym. And Kim's going to get to what's in there in a lot more detail. There's a, they, TNT would also have access to this side. This side of this purple area is the gym area. So, we have that divided so we can have it flexible. So, we have some overhead doors or coiling doors between the sensory gym and the half court gym. So, TNT can use this area and it could also be shut down. So, that area would be the cafeteria lunchroom for the Setting D kids. And that area is connected right off the kitchen of Lewis and Clark, which is in this area. So, we've made a door here, a serving window, so lunch can be served to the Setting D kids right out of the Lewis and Clark kitchen. And then we have a folding wall, which is in here, that kind of divides a full-size elementary gym into two halves. So, that would be a folding wall. The other side over here, that's the expanded gym for Lewis and Clark Elementary School. So, Lewis and Clark has a small lunchroom right now and it needs more space. So, as part of this project, we expanded the lunchroom to provide more lunchroom space for Lewis and Clark. And then the, that would be in this area. And then there's the, the serving line and all that stuff kind of remains the same up there for the lunchroom. And in the old lunchroom area, we've created a new classroom and a music room. So, we took one of the, one of the classrooms that's here, moved it over here so it has outside window and then made the existing classroom and another classroom in a remodeled area, music room. So, Lewis and Clark needed new music rooms and more space for music. So, those, these spaces over here are remodeled for Lewis and Clark. Some of the features of security in here, we have, we have the classroom set up so a student could leave the classroom and it would lock behind them. So, there's like, if the, if a student needs to get out of the classroom, they could leave a classroom, go out into the classroom commons area, but they could not get back in the classroom without staff and the key card letting them back into the room. That's, that same is true with the whole perimeter around a classroom commons area, the group of classrooms. The student could get out into the main hallway, but could not come back in without a staff member and their key card letting them in. And then students can get out into the main hallway. So, if they have to get out in the main hallway and just get away, staff would follow them out there and, and they could get out into the mail, main hallway. But they could not leave the school building proper. So, we would have security on the doors around all of the exterior doors in the school building. So, there'd be magnetic locks that where a student could not exit out of there and get be, say, get out into the street or out into the bus drop or anything like that. That is fail-safe. So, if there's an emergency or a fire alarm or something like that, the doors unlock and people can get out of the building. We have, off that main hallway, we also have a maker space to do STEAM programs and things like that. So, students in the Setting D area can use that maker space. So, we would create a space for those kind of educational opportunities. You'll see I have some kind of a red marks on here. We were, like at Pancallo or Carner Blue, we were kind of talking about doing an exploration theme here. So, we would set up some sort of a themed wall at each one of those to kind of emphasize the Explorer theme of Lewis and Clark or something like that. And we thought we could do that at the sensory gym, the maker space, and then kind of the main entries into the, each one of the classroom pods. Right? And then I'll go on to the next, I keep going the wrong way. These are some views of the outside. We, this would be the entrance from the north side. On the left is the entrance into the TNT area. Into the right would be the entrance off the bus loop into the Setting D area of the school. And we're designing it to kind of blend with Lewis and Clark, same color, same bricks. This would be a view from the southwest side, showing the parking lot and the main entry into the Setting D. I was talking about these kind of low windows in the reset rooms, they would be here. And then in each one of the classrooms, there would be high windows to let in lots of natural light. So, in these schools, natural lighting is very important. So, we want to provide lots of natural light and we're doing that all throughout and even in the classroom commons area. This is a view of a typical classroom commons area. We would have soft seating. We have, we've, some of the features of the interior, we'd have kind of calming, soft colors, mostly indirect lighting. The mechanical and electrical systems are specially designed in here. So, they have larger ductwork. We have attenuators in the ductwork to lessen the noise. So, in a typical space, you'd hear all that white noise and other noises of mechanical, electrical systems. We would design all those so that would be lessened or not exist in a school like this to, to help make that environment a much more calming. All of our colors would be more naturalistic, blues, greens, kind of natural colors, calming. Some of the other features would be like a fire alarm systems would not have strobes on them. In a normal school, you'd have a strobe light that goes off or an alarm with a really loud alarm. Those would be eliminated. We'd have a special alarm system where it'd be addressable. So, you'd hear voices instead of an alarm going off. The acoustics in here, we have kind of a higher level of, level of acoustics in the ceiling tiles and things like that to help lessen them on a noise between classrooms. So, all those things would be taken care of. The lighting, as was said, all the lighting in the rooms would be LED and would be dimmable. So, you'd be able to control that with a dimming system, the lighting in a classroom or in the whole school with a dimming system. So, the whole school could be dimmed. And they're full spectrum kind of lighting, more like a natural light, these LED lights. So, and that would be controllable through the whole school. As I said, we've, we've tried to avoid kind of a bright colors, things like that and do natural colors. And we have a lot of these little spaces. We have sensory, sensory rooms and respite rooms to go to in each areas of the building. The next item we'll have is the, we have kind of a plan of, we've met with the building officials on this. So, this building is still in E occupancy, but because of the exiting and the locking, we have to lock kids into the school building. It's kind of looked at as exiting as like an I or an institutional occupancy. And we've gotten approval from the school district or from the building official to do this. And the schools down in the Twin Cities we, we toured are similar to this. Like I said, the exterior perimeter would have electronic locks on them. And we've, we met with the building official about exiting out of the building. Normally, when there's a fire alarm, you'd have to exit the kids outside of the building. And in this school, we'd have a, a separation that would kind of separate the east and the west sides of the schools. So, during a fire alarm situation, the kids could, we call it a horizontal exit, could exit from one side or the other to get to a safe spot inside the school building. So, that's kind of how the exiting works in this building. We, it would be safe and we, we've gotten approval from the building official to be able to look at doing this. And that's just a narrative of, in more detail of some of the features in the, the doors and things like that. So, any questions? I have the cost estimate. That's probably what you're interested in too, the last item. The, the total cost for construction and our probable costs here is about 10.15 million for construction costs and a total project cost with all the other soft costs included is about 11.8 million. All right?
Very good. Thank you. I think we'll take questions when we complete all the presentations. Thank you. Next up is TNT's representatives, Kim Platzen and Ryan Williams.
Good evening. First, you know, we want to just share how much we support the, the setting of the D setting and how we view this partnership is, is really a proactive approach to more of a community approach as well as the public as providing a thoughtful and meaningful solution to the children that we each serve. And I, I believe that the effort that we look at is the public school setting, but there is an out-of-school setting that also needs to be addressed. And when we have parents come to us and, and look at our summer programming, our out-of-school programming time, who are very desperate of, if you can't take our child, where will we go? Nobody can serve us. And so, I look at this as a collaboration, working together with our schools and our other community partners because it's going to take a community so that we can all give 100% to helping all children be successful. And much like when we look at this space, we have signed an MOU with Fargo Public School that we are committed to pay for the design and the equipment to go into that space and in return, signed a agreement that we would pay per square footage for out-of-school time, summertime. And we look at, because we're a year-round organization, we look at some of the benefits to children that come to us before they go to school because that has been documented that through IEP meetings, the school officials are asking, why is this day on Tuesday your child's best day? And that's the day they start their day at TNT. So, maybe there's before-school programming, maybe there's after-school programming. There has to be that flexibility and I feel that that's serving the child in the best way possible. So, we see that as a benefit of working with the school. We also look at the summertime and extended school year. We do do a 12-year, a 12-week program and we have a lot of integration. We have a lot of inclusion. We work with 36 schools on a weekly basis where at the very first of our partnership with Fargo Public Schools in 2008, it was very physical, very cognitive-based students. But through the years, it has turned to be more about a C-setting classroom. It is about integrating many different types of I, I shouldn't say IP, but many different adaptations that children are needing. So, your parent professionals come, your teachers come, they're working with our staff. We've been visioned to work on training models that we could do professional development for your staff outside of the school day to help be more of a support and when a child does become in a state where they need to self-regulate, what are some of those strategies that we could provide them? So, we look at this as not just the, the setting, as what could we be to a service to the district and professional development? We have a team that really has served all three districts in our community, have been out in Bismarck to the adult population to help working with integration. And truly, children are a third of our population, but they are 100% of our future and we need to plan for what is the best course for them as they're growing in the developmental ages and as TNT has grown with people from 2008- ages, and as TNT has grown with people from 2008 that are now in adult agency programs. We're really excited about lending our collaborative spirit, and we partner with every higher education in this community. We partner with University of Jamestown, University of Mary, both with physical therapy, occupational therapy. And as much as there is a teacher shortage, it is probably the number-one program in our, in our organization that people ask to be a part of the special needs program, because it fulfills them, and they feel that they're prepared to work with the student. So when we look at those higher education partnerships, we look at it as we're preparing future professionals or, or future teachers, because some may come to us that didn't have an idea that they would like to serve in this population, or pursue their teaching degree, or go into a doctoral program, and we're really excited about those opportunities. We do provide those future professionals. I'm going to turn it a little bit more over to Ryan, so he can talk a little bit more about the programming, but that's me, more of our vision of what we see with this partnership. Thank you.
So, thank you for having us today. A little bit about myself, I started at TNT seven years ago. My background is physical education. Excuse me, I'm still a licensed FIDE teacher in the state of North Dakota, however, I'm not teaching in a school district, I'm teaching at a recreational facility. And I never thought that I would be in a gymnastics facility that was never on my radar. I wanted to teach elementary FIDE, coach baseball, and life would be great. And once I got there, I realized that the movement that we were teaching in a gymnastics facility was so much more impactful than the movement that I was taught to teach in my FIDE classes, because in those classes that I was instructed to teach on was the manipulative movements, how to dribble a basketball, how to throw, how to catch, how to kick, how to volley, or locomotor, how do we skip? Walk, crawl, jog, run, gallop, not how to move our bodies. We were never taught, how do you teach bending and stretching in a fun environment? How do you teach jumping and landing on a flat floor? It's difficult. And the opportunity that we have in a gymnastics facility that we would replicate into this setting is that we can teach far greater movement, that is, testing children's strength, testing their own limits to see, what can I do in a safe environment, because they're not throwing a ball as hard as they can, and maybe not purposely trying to throw it at someone, like dodgeball, but at a wall or outside. And this is a chance for them to challenge themselves in a safe setting with soft floors, with properly-trained instructors. So once I got to TNT, I realized how different movement actually was, and when we teach them how to control their bodies, as I alluded to in a previous conversation, in order to control your body, you need to control your brain, and you need to have those, a self-regulation, otherwise you can't control your body. If you're in a heightened state, you're out of control. Not on purpose, but that's just, your emotional brain's taking over, not your logical brain. And when we started United Way 12 years, in 2012, not 12 years ago, we, as Kim alluded to, we talked, or we taught a lot more of the physical ability, because that's what our setting allowed. It allowed individuals to get out of wheelchairs, because we had mats, we had swings, we had different apparatuses that let them work on core strength, flexibility, range of motion, things like that. And as the, working with the districts, and Patty, and Dwayne Borgeson, and Morehead, and now Rachel Jennison, and West Fargo, we don't choose the individuals that they send to us, they choose. And they sort of descend and ask us to serve more individuals that had emotional disorders, and more of that Level C, Level B setting, more so than the physical need. And that really got us to adapt our own curriculum, and work with University of Jamestown's Physical Therapy Program, University of Mary's Physical, or Doc, Occupational Therapy Program, NDSU, MSU, and Concordia, and say, how do we meet these needs? Because it's our goal not to be the emotional, social-emotional experts, it's our goal to be the physical experts, and how can we do what we want to do to get them back in a classroom ready to learn and engaged in the classroom? It's not our job to, to necessarily teach the behavior, but one of my coworkers, and I don't know if this is proper at a meeting like this, but one of my coworkers has taught me this quick little activity, and if you don't mind joining me in this, okay? So I just want you to show me your thumbs. Put your thumbs up, okay? Now point your pointers out. So as I look around, I see that you guys are able to do this. Put your thumbs up, put your pointers out. Thumbs up, pointers out. Put one thumb up, one pointer out. Switch. Switch. Now switch. Now switch. Why are you laughing? So, so what I just did there, I asked you to do a simple task, in my opinion, but I put you in a vulnerable state. Now you're in front of your peers, performing something that everyone else can look at you and understand what your ability level is. Some of us shut down right away. Oh, haha. Some of us may still be working on, how can I get, how can I get better? That was, I want to be the best at this. But what we're asking in, in physical activities, we're putting you in a vulnerable state in front of your peers. We're asking you to socially show everyone else how, what your ability level is. When we ask you to read something quietly, I can't see your brain working, I can't see if you understand it. But if I ask you to jump, I can see on the spot that you know how to jump on one foot, two feet, land on one foot, whatever it may be. And that brings out an emotion of who that individual is, and how they can control being vulnerable. Are they going to get frustrated and want to flee? I can see that before it happens. How do we address that in that state? How do we get them in those environments to help classroom teachers see those triggers? That maybe they need a movement break, because they're getting really fidgety, they're getting really antsy, they, they just need to move. And we've worked with, with many paraprofessionals among all three districts. We've been doing paraprofessional trainings before and during school years. And the main thing is focusing on occupational therapy practice called activity analysis, and understanding how each activity we ask you to do, how that provokes an emotion, and how we play a role in it, and how you play a role in it. And with that, we also know that the paraprofessionals that we're asking to work with the most challenging ability levels, that they are not trained, because in school, as even as a teacher, I'm taught about content, content delivery, how do we teach content? Not how do we teach to the holistic child and their social-emotional well-being? I wasn't taught to be an occupational therapist, behavioral specialist, social worker, any of that, but I'm being asked of that as a teacher. And with that, that population, the more that we can provide paraprofessional training on an ongoing basis, is just solidifying some of the other trainings that they're getting, that they're receiving outside of the district, to see, currently with our United Way partnership, with the 36 schools, we're working with our occupational therapists to help them understand triggers, help the special education understand some of the things that we're seeing. Again, not that we're the experts, but we're just trying to build that community that we're here to help. And whatever we can provide is going to be beneficial, because it's going to take an army, it's going to take our whole community to work with all abilities. And when I say abilities, I believe I heard correctly that we were talking about gifted children earlier, and providing programming for some gifted readers literacy. And we, we're okay with that, but why are we okay with providing them AP classes and all these other gifted things to, to, to reach their ability levels? But we're hesitant on providing another setting to reach someone else's ability level. I just, we're, we're a huge component and advocate for this setting, and we want to be a part of it and provide any opportunity, any training we can. We know that we're, we're more focused on the physical side, but we're also open to adjust and learn about our curriculum to encompass all the learning styles, all the, the different domains, the cognitive, the physical, the social, and the emotional. And we just really appreciate the opportunity and look forward to, to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentations. Maybe I can turn it over to the planning chair, so Kristi, you can kind of give an overview of our meeting and the direction from that committee?
Certainly, thank you, Robyn. So at our planning committee meeting, we had the same presentations, learning about the services that will be provided, the physical space and the, the moving space, and the activities that will be provided. We have gone through all of those, and from the planning committee, we came to a consensus that we would bring this forth to the full board and have these presentations to the public as well. So at this time, I would like to move to authorize administration to proceed with securing bids to remodel and expand Lewis and Clark Elementary School, to provide Setting D services, not to exceed $11,817,866, and to also begin a partnership with TNT Kids Fitness and Gymnastics.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a lot of questions, but I'll ask my, one at a time here. Considering the, going back to the day-to-day operations and the programming, and all of the homework and community engagement that we've done over the past several years as we've gotten ourselves to this point, have there been lessons learned, doing this research and planning for this academy, that can or will be applied to other schools in our district?
I think there's always an opportunity to learn from one area to another. I don't think that we need to say that only the teachers who are working in this school would receive a certain professional development, but a focus would be for these teachers. It would be, I think, a little silly and not very fiscally responsible to, to not share the wealth, but as Ryan was saying, we need to provide on all ends of spectrum of, of child ability, and so we need to provide some focus for these kiddos. They are not bad kids, they are kids who need something different, and so we owe it to them, as well as any other student. But again, I think that many people could grow from what we do here, and have more outreach into our full district.
Dr. Gandhi.
Yeah, and I think I'll capitalize a little bit further as well. That one of the, you know, some of the best lessons that we learned last year when we had a community conversation around this with, in partnership with West Fargo, was that our task force really took two directions. One was that there is a gap in special education services we provide in our district directly, because we don't offer Setting D services. But then the second conversation was, what are critical attributes that we should try to provide in all educational environments? And those critical attributes are not limited to Setting D. Those are things that we want to provide in our Setting A, B, and C environments as well. The Setting D is because that's a gap in our current service, and we do know that to some level, physical environment does have some triggers that could cause with the lighting and the auditory, and then there's also an opportunity for movement here. So I don't think the two conversations are mutually exclusive. I also want to be very clear by saying, I don't think this is the end-all-be-all solution to behavior concerns. That is not what we're trying to do with this proposal. We're really trying to provide an environment where students have triggers that have stimulated, or manifested into behaviors that can't focus on their environment. But our focus is always going to be that least restrictive environment, and growing and improving every setting for education we provide. So this past year as a district, we increased from two elementary Setting C opportunities to eight. We increased from one middle school opportunity to three. We know that doing that allowed us to reduce class sizes in some of those classrooms that were, they were essentially magnet programs before, and reduce the teacher's class ratio. We want to continue providing those opportunities, and it's not that just because we're putting some resources into Setting D, we're not going to do that in Setting A. So there's definitely lessons learned from the homework that we've done, that we want to apply to all of our environments. One of the other ones is, is providing mental health services. This is not going to be the only setting in Fargo Public Schools that we try to bring in outside therapy or mental health services. We are continuing to work on that across all settings, but that doesn't eliminate the need to also have a separate Setting D.
And just to follow up, I had asked primarily about the programming, you addressed this a little bit, but as we look at the facilities and the lessons we've learned from some of our board members visiting the different other facilities in Minnesota, our staff doing the same, have we learned lessons that can be applied to future new builds or remodels in our existing facilities in the district?
Absolutely. I think some of the design elements that we will be, if this proposal is passed, that will happen at the Setting D, we will, I, I would absolutely entertain that conversation about any new building or remodels in our district, and bring that conversation to the board, can we provide these design elements? I think at that point, it's a matter of cost, because there are some design elements in a Setting D facility, such as the caulking and the location of how high your panels are, that might be easily able to replicate across renovation projects or new builds in the district. But then there's some other things, such as how, how large your HVAC system is, that we might not be able to afford for every new building. So I think we have to have those conversations on an individual project level.
I have further questions, but I would pass my time.
Rebecca, and then Jennifer.
Well, I have, I have my statement written down here, and I just want everyone to know that I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion, and I want to let you know why. So January 22nd, 2019, the Fargo Board of Education and West Fargo School Board, we were presented with an executive summary and a final report of a task force that was formed to study the needs for a Setting D program in this area. As many of us know, prior to this, at the May 18th, 2018 meeting of the Fargo Board of Education, the board passed a, a motion to remodel a portion of Aggie. I was one that voted in favor of that, and that was to, again, assist the district to provide students with Setting D services. There was lots of communication within our community regarding this decision. The board and the district listened, I believe, to that feedback from our community, and the plans to, we decided, as a district and a board, the plans to fully incorporate a Setting D program at Aggie were put on hold, with the direction back to conduct more thorough and research, more thorough research surrounding Set E D programs and to involve stakeholders more broadly in the discussion, with the idea that additional recommendations would come to the district for the board for consideration, such as what we're receiving today. A task force was formed involving the necessary stakeholders, district staff and educators, as well as architects. At board members toured various schools that provide services complementary to Setting D. I toured the school at Pancalo in Elmo Lake, Minnesota. A legal opinion was sought and obtained regarding the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, as it pertains to least restrictive environments required for students with special needs. Careful attention has been paid to both the staffing, wraparound services, and design of the school, which, as we know now, the present, the proposal in front of us is to be in addition to Lewis and Clark. So I believe that the plan that was, that's in front of us, addresses the recommendations that were contained in that January 22nd executive summary that came from the task force. And there were five of them, five most critical attributes outlined in that summary, first and foremost. One, academic goals and transitions. Two, environment, culture, and climate. Three, social-emotional learning. Four, safety and appropriate space. Five, staff, training, and professional development. And there were five others that were deemed to be less critical by that task force, and I believe this plan goes even farther and supports those needs as well, those attributes. One, parent and family engagement. Two, community partners. Three, budget sustainability. Four, best practices. And five, relationships. I believe this speaks to the thoroughness that we have asked our district and our community to address regarding this issue. And I'm grateful that the community pushed the district and the board to dive deeper into this, because I think we're better where we are now. I'm thankful that we've had a lot of hard questions that we have had to answer, not as much the board needing to answer, but the district has been answering, working to research and answer many, many questions, rightfully asked. So I stated after my tour at Pancalo at the November 12th board meeting, that I have learned more about how serving the needs of specialty students is not only about making sure that the teachers and the support staff are highly qualified and trained, but how crucial it is for them to have the environment in order to have that flexibility that is conducive to the needs of those students. And I believe we have been carefully studying and researching the best ways to make available our students this highly specialized educational programming. I believe supporting the motion will result us in, as a community, ultimately being able to say we are truly better to meet the needs of all of the students of Fargo Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions too, actually several, but I'll start with just a couple. And Rebecca, as I was listening to yours, then I, I wanted to seek clarification first because as we talk about studying, programming, or improving programming and what we've done differently in our Level C programs, I am curious. I know that we've, the district has learned a lot and also from the tours and perhaps moving forward, you know, has made adjustments. But do, have we measured any of those? And I know it's been a short period of time, but have we seen continued student growth as we have improved our Level C programming and services? And also part of that question is, you know, one of our speakers brought up workforce and, and and I think that this conversation goes back to, this is going to take a village, it's going to take a community. FPS can't do all of this on their own. And so I'm very happy to see collaboration happening with TNT. But along those lines, Rebecca had mentioned, you know, this separate school setting. Patty talked about level, you know, separate school settings. And, and I, I need clarification around, in the lawyer's letter itself, it does say that it doesn't mean it's a location. It's a service. It's a level of service. And so I think that maybe this is an opportunity to clarify that because when I, when I read this paragraph, again, I, I can't help but have questions when I listen to, to members speak around, are we really, what are we doing there first? Because a building isn't going to solve our problem.
So, and as much as I don't want to qualify, I do have to qualify your question around how do we measure the success of our setting C programs? Because there's a lot of factors at play. I think first and foremost, we are across all settings in our district, from the general education classroom to the least restrictive environment that we offer directly right now, which is setting C. I think we're part of a continuous improvement process and we are going to be. There are also students sitting in our setting C classrooms that came in from other districts or other states that had a setting D on their environment, and those students' needs are not being met. We know right now, and that influences the success of our setting C program as well. So it is very easy to say, well, if you do this and this and this, your setting C program will improve and you won't need a setting D. I do not agree with that premise because if that premise was correct, we would not have a setting D under IDA law. And secondly, it's not about one individual improvement to a program that you offer in your district. It's about the totality of the circumstance. Today, at not asking UC elementary administrators across the board that are here to be part of this conversation, we have students, we have students that we've had to make the very, very tough decision as a district and say that the only place for them to receive an educational setting right now is a detention center because they are posing a threat and their needs are not being met at the setting that we can provide as a school district. We also have students who have sought outside services and refuse to be given those outside services for a variety of reasons, that are back to our school the next day. And I am not going to say that those are the students that are going to qualify for setting D, nor will setting D address all of those issues. But the truth is, right now, there is no in-between. Because when a student comes in with needs that can't be met in a current setting C classroom, they have two choices. Either we, we do the least restrictive environment, put them in the setting C classroom. Sometimes we're not able to meet their needs and that becomes a stress around the existing program. So that's why it's hard to measure that success, or they have to go to a residential facility. And that has happened in our district as well. So I would say, yes, we have improved in our setting C programs and we're going to continue to improve. That's the same thing with setting A, B, and C. But I disregard the premise that if your setting C programs are perfect, you wouldn't need setting D.
David.
Dr. Gandhi, can I just talk a little bit? My educational career until this year has been in Minnesota. I have never known any different that, that we have what we call Level Four programs in Minnesota, and there are hundreds in the state of Minnesota. What, we never looked at them as a place where you send a child. We looked at them as an opportunity that a child could go to get the level of service or the support that they needed at that time in their life so that they could grow. And we always talked about in our programs that we teach kids skills and we give them tools and we give them tools to put in their toolboxes so that when they return to their home school, they can take out the appropriate tool and use it so that they can be successful back in their schools. Like I said, I don't know. I have had students attend the different programs that we visited from schools that I belong to. I had parents cry when their students were going to return back to their home schools because maybe their member districts, there wasn't room there. We've had students in Minnesota on wait lists for a year where parents are asking for them to be able to go and there's just not room in the programs. They have to wait. So it, when I came here and I started here, I was very surprised that this was even occurring because Wisconsin, South Dakota, we have students that have come in this year from Virginia and that all have this level of programming and this level of support that they need on their IEP that they have chosen. And I have parents asking why we don't have it here. And it's really hard for me because I know where I have been that there are many specially designed programs. Are they perfect? No. Like Dr. Gandhi said, there still is behavior, there still are things. But the environment, and by working with those teams and those staff, they come together like no other to help support that child and that family. And parents, it just, it goes so much smoother. Parents are not getting called to come and get their child from school. Students are not being placed on homebound because they have a level of support that they need. Services and staff, when we would have positions open in those programs, a lot of staff would apply for that because they knew that the level of support and their caseloads would be smaller and they had administrative support and people right there that surrounded them, and they knew what that support looked like and felt. Already in Fargo, we've had teachers come to us and say, we would like to work there. If this goes, we would like to work there. We have staff that are so invested in our students and care so much and only want them to grow. They will do what they need to do in order to get that done. So like I said, coming from Minnesota, I'm, I don't know any different until I came here.
Dr. Rupak, go ahead, but I would also encourage Patty to tell the story about how the parents are involved and some of the grieving processes that they have because that was, that's what really struck me about this whole conversation at our planning committee. Dr. Gandhi?
Yeah, I just wanted to answer the second part of Jennifer's question because I thought it was a great question around setting D doesn't have to be a location. And I think that goes back to, when you look at IDA law, setting C is inside, inside the regular general education classroom for less than 40% of the day, setting D is a separate school. And I think it's, it's around your definition of a separate school. When we look at this expansion and to Lewis and Clark where we're going to provide setting D services, to me, that is a separate school. There, it's managed separately. That school is not part of the general education classroom. Now the IEP team can go and make a decision and have a conversation about transitioning for part of the day. And, and that's what the, being connected to Lewis and Clark allows that to do. But I think we're meeting that setting D obligation because I think that is a separate school versus a separate classroom inside of a school which would, could, could qualify as a setting C environment.
So Patty, when you, when you tell that, that story, because that, that touched me also, like the average time that students might be served in this facility. It's not just a permanent placement for their entire elementary years, correct?
That's correct. I mean, you know, the IEP team will work with individually, student-per-student basis. But going to a setting, any of the settings is never, it does not have to be a permanent thing. You look at where the students best, are best able to meet and get their free and appropriate public education. And when kiddos are, you know, escalated, they're not feeling very good themselves. And so their, their little, their brains and their minds aren't on math and reading at that time. And after you've escalated, it takes hours sometimes to de-escalate. And here's where my, my story and I, the replication of it, I don't know, but I can tell you, speaking as, and I can't speak for every parent and I never would try. I too have a child with a significant disability and I will tell you that, that was noticeable from birth. And so you grieve the loss of a lot of things. I grieved, my husband grieved, and my, the sibling of my daughter with special needs grieved from birth to, and then, as you know, we serve kiddos in the school system, starting in preschool program at age three. Doesn't mean the grieving stopped at age three. What I feel for the parents of students who mana, who's, whose disability manifests in behavior that can be harmful to themselves or others, they have to grieve in front of us. They have to grieve in front of their teachers. They have to grieve in front of their, their principals. They want their child to do well in school. School is what marks youth. And so with that grieving process comes emotion, and no doubt, it is very painful. And any decision that is made here today, on one end or the other, could be painful. We told information of parents who came from other states who said, they simply could not understand why we didn't have this. They were actually a little mad. It's okay. We have heard from parents today and we've heard from parents in the recent past how this would be very painful for them if it went through. And no doubt, that's true. None of this is easy. The job is to provide an education for students at whatever level and to meet them where they're at. I guess with my story before, my narrative before was to say, nobody, nobody said this was going to be emotionally easy. And I trust the board to make the decision that they feel needs to be made for the students of this district. But to also know that while we have all the legal responsibility, there's a hard side of this and we can't lose sight of that. And if this does go through, we need to work as diligently as ever with many stakeholders, parents being the frontrunners of those, to design a program that's worthy of their children.
Good. David?
Excuse me. This is very important to me. I took an entire day to go to Goodhue because I'm very, very concerned about the behavior that we're seeing along with all the other school districts in, in the state and the nation. I've got to tell you very honestly, when I went to Goodhue, I saw a school. It had different, it had dimmer lights, it had different furniture, but I saw a school. Big differences, smaller classrooms, less kids, more staff. My concern, I'm not against a Level D. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be incorporating the things that we're talking about into all of our schools. We've got a real problem that's occurring in our society. We're seeing tremendous increases in, in violence. We're seeing the suicide rates going way up. We're seeing bullying. It, it's all epidemic. And it could be that what's escalating the behavior of our, what we're calling now our Level D students is escalating the kids that we're not noticing it in until something happens. Why aren't we using calming lighting in our present classrooms? Why aren't we using more calming colors? Why don't we have these planning areas with outdoors where they can just go and be alone and get their thoughts together? Instead of having to step out into the, into the hallway, for instance, where they're, all of a sudden, they're recognized as being, oh, problems. Why don't we have smaller classrooms and smaller classes? Instead of saying Fargo's the first school in North Dakota with a Level D, why don't we say Fargo's the first school that decided there's not going to be an elementary, elementary classroom over 10 kids? All we got to do is put up some more walls in the buildings we have now. Why don't we have sensory gyms as TNT has in our present schools? Why aren't we using some of these things that have been shown to be so beneficial in our present settings? You know, some, one of our presenters from the audience said it perfectly. She said, buildings don't de-escalate behavior, people do. We have incredible staff in Fargo. We just don't have enough of them. And that's a, that's a big concern to me. When we have, when we're understaffed currently and now we're saying that we're going to have to hire all these, all these other people. Goodhue paid huge bonuses to get their people to come back. They worked with the teachers' union so, to allow them to pay their psychologists, for instance, way above salary. Otherwise, they had, they had loss of staff every year like everybody else. They said, since they started with these bonuses, they keep their staff. You know, I, I'm not convinced that Level D is the wrong, is the wrong thing. I just don't know that we've done enough to show that we can't solve some of the problems without building a brand-new building.
I don't disagree with that thought, that, is there more and could there be more that, and elements from here that we could replicate across our entire system? And I would absolutely advocate for that. The reality is, for eight classrooms, this costs $11.8 million. And I just don't know at this point, I mean, I would love to have that conversation with the board if we have the capacity as a district to, to increase, to build a sensory gym in every one of our buildings and all of those things and do all these design elements. That's $11.8 million for eight classrooms. And if we could replicate that, I would absolutely be open to that conversation. And I think administration would as well, but that is kind of the truth of where we are. With that being said, even if all of those things were in place, all of the design elements, I still believe that we would have a need for setting D. Because there is a separate school environment that some of the students need and can benefit more than just being in a general education classroom. The notice from the lawyer will tell you, and when you take a look at that, in their last paragraph, it says, exercise all, everything you can in a general education environment, and that's when a student should be placed in a setting D. There is something different about going to a general education school and having the stimuli of as many students as we have in our traditional school and not being able to do what you need to do or learn in your best environment because you still have a different need to be in a separate school. And that's what setting D does. But I think your conversation, the answer to your question, is cost and resources. I think the other piece is staffing. We've talked a lot about staffing and I think we should look at staffing from two ways. The conversation that there's a teacher shortage, there absolutely is. We're facing it, every school district's facing it as well. But I do want to clarify that the fact that there's no special ed teachers and that we're, we have rooms that don't have special ed teachers, that I think is being misrepresenting of what's happening. We have teachers that have a plan on file, meaning general education teachers that don't have a special education endorsement or certification yet, and they're working towards that and they will get that throughout this school year. Those are still educators, and those are fantastic educators that have made the choice that I want to become and teach in a special education environment. I think by just saying that they're not special educators and they can't meet the needs of kids, you are disqualifying the, the effort and the training that that teacher's received. As a former special educator myself, I can tell you that we are teachers. I wasn't a math teacher. I wasn't a science teacher. I was a teacher. And I think just because I have a plan on file and to get my special education certification to serve our most vulnerable learners, we should be celebrating them and not discrediting them. And if, if that was an issue about discrediting their efforts and their ability to transition from a general education classroom to a special education classroom, then go have that conversation with ESPB. Because we should encourage those individuals to make that transition. And I think that I'm grateful that we have so many teachers that say, there is a need. And, and that doesn't mean that they're not qualified. That just... And, and that doesn't mean that they're not qualified, that just means they're going to work towards getting their special education certification to carry on their best practices as a teacher, to meet the needs of some of our most vulnerable learners. So I think that's kind of, yeah, my response to those questions.
I just have a comment. At the planning meeting, Kim, you had a quote that stuck with me in regards to the children that come with you and, and, and I may be slightly off in, in your words, but Kim said, "All children are a gift and these gifts just need to be unwrapped." And that really stuck with me because I've got family that are teachers and that have worked in special education. And as I look at this, I, I think of the viral video of, and it was Ryan jumping on the trampoline with the special needs child in the wheelchair. And how many views did you have for that? And so, being adaptive. And so how can we, these are vulnerable children and they deserve to have as much education as we possibly can. And if we can team with community partners such as TNT and unwrap each one of these gifts, I think it's just a blessing and it's the responsibility that we have as a school district to do so.
I think it was Nate.
Was it Nate?
It was Nate.
Okay.
Jennifer.
It was actually 50 million views in 32 countries across the world that responded to that video and A. It went for over 10 days with a long, social media platform. You'd say it's a one or two day business over 10.
Wasn't it on the Today Show too?
It was on all the social media of every public education in the United States.
Okay. Sorry. Go, go ahead.
So I think you're absolutely right, Kristi, and many of you have commented, we absolutely have to get this right. We need to do this the right way. And I think that's why, the, I'm thankful for the opportunity to have this discussion about what those collaborations are going to look like, could look like moving forward because I don't hear the criticism coming around programming being that our special ed teachers aren't good or good enough or even the best. I hear that they're the best from many and I believe that. I think though, there's a mental health component that they, correct me if I'm wrong, don't necessarily have the certification for. And yet we're asking them to provide those kinds of services. And so to me, that's something that DHS should be sitting here talking about. How can we collaborate with them so that their providers are in our schools, maybe more frequently? Uh, you know, I've heard that, that through their reorganization, that that is something that they're talking about. I attended their community conversation last week and, and they are restructuring their entire department. And it is long overdue, but I do think that one of the areas that has been identified has been, how can we strengthen our partnership within schools to meet the students and really anyone, their families where they need it? And so if I see anyone missing at the table and if I have, you know, added conversations, it's really about that. It's not about questioning, I mean, much like David said, it's not questioning whether or not we need to provide these services or how we're currently providing them or where these students are currently receiving them. It's really about how can we do this the right way and get the students the services that they need within mental health? Because this is an education institution, not a mental health.
Very good. I'm starting to sense a consensus, so if we can, I, I've got Rupak, John and David. Oh, okay.
Absolutely agree. I think we need mental health service providers to be at the table and across all of our settings from Setting A through Setting D if this gets proposed as well. This proposal is not a mental health facility. This is proposals for an academic environment where we're bringing in a contracted service specifically for that school. That does not eliminate the contracted services that we are looking to provide mental health across our system. I know Missy can probably speak to all of the different service providers that we have in the district right now. We have reached out to DHS as well and that would be someone else that we will, we would be willing to work with. The way we view it is, for the mental health services provided at the Setting D school, we assume that there would be a bidding, a bidding process or a competitive process for mental health service providers that can meet the needs of students here. But also systemically across the district, we want to reach out and partner with as many mental health providers and we are doing that right now too. We're working with some of the solutions and some other organizations across our, our community to bring those services into our school. But it's not, let's just build this and for a place to receive mental health, this is a place where we can provide an academic instruction in an environment that's meaningful for the kids, but knowing the kids also need mental health services, bring that in as well.
John?
Thank you. My next question is for YHR, not so much related to necessarily the specific use of this facility, but to its general design. And I'm wondering what considerations or plans have been given to the energy efficiency and water efficiency and waste reduction of this facility, specifically with target to, towards their, its carbon footprint? Would this be a net zero facility of carbon emissions? Is there a roadmap to a net zero with this? Or what would be the impact on our environment in Fargo here? Thank you.
Well, I don't think it would be a net zero, but we, we could have that discussion during the design of it. That costs a lot of money to build a net zero facility. But yeah, the way YHR designs buildings, we, we design them to be sustainable as much as we can over and above the standard for the building code. So we do extra insulation, we, we do air, you know, heat recovery systems, things like that. We do everything we can to make it sustainable and we also do a lot of things for, our standard specification in the building is to reduce the volatile organic compounds, kind of VOCs in the environment, so there's not toxic substances in all the materials, things like that. So we, we take that very seriously and we, we do as much as we can with the budget we have, but we can further have those further discussions if the project goes forward.
Thank you. Can I follow up on that somewhat related? Can you talk to us about the design of the transportation and traffic flow around the facility? Is this going to impact the current way students get in and out of Lewis and Clark? Will it impact the residents of the neighborhoods in the locations? And how is it envisioned that most of the students will be, being dropped off? Will they be dropped off at that bus loop? Will they be dropped off at the main entrance?
As we looked at one of the, the maps of the facility, we talked a lot about the current bus loop. And in that map, I think it's going to be pulled up here, the thought is that many of the students who would come to Lewis and Clark would, come to Lewis and Clark the way they always have. If that is through the current bus loop, if that is their parents dropping them off and using the different locations, the students who might come to this new addition, the idea is that that bus loop would be used for their transportation as well. There would be additional spots, if you look at just to the right of that bus loop in which some of the other transportations or other buses could stop, students then would exit through there to that student entrance that's on the lower left-hand side here. The other idea is that some students may choose and some parents may choose to transport their own students, just like they do to any other school. That's where now on 17th Street, there would be a new entrance into that parking lot area right there, in which then, parents could then go into that staff visitor parking lot and could park their car and then staff could come and assist students into that new area. So I think there was some good thought into the busing for the students both at Lewis and Clark and now this new addition and for those who want to transport their students themselves.
Just a quick follow-up related to that. We've done a lot of community engagement in the past few weeks. Were the residents of this neighborhood part of that community engagement?
Only what would have been at the PTA meeting.
Brian?
Well, I'm in, definitely in favor of the, of this project. I like to thank Rebecca for the history of what's happened here. Patty, we too had a, a daughter that is in special education. I'm proud to say she's a speech pathologist working for mine at public schools now. We don't have a Level, a Setting D school as listed on page 14 in the IDEA Act. As a board, we're providing our, our staff with a tool. And it's up to the IEP team to decide how that child's going to be placed. We have a superintendent who is a leader, has a master's degree in special education. I have complete trust that the whole process and due process, all the way to, to us, but to him before us, will, will happen in that he's going to place kids or the team is going to place kids in the least restrictive environment. I appreciate the board members that have gone and visited schools. Thank you for doing that. The task force, all the many meetings, study and all the information, Jackie providing all the, the financial data and things like that. I like how everything's been transparent. I appreciate the partnership with TNT in our, appreciate the planning meeting and the, and how we connected, how I connected with you. I truly believe in what you're going to do. I really do. Having been in gymnastics myself, um, I know it doesn't look like that, no. And I wasn't very good, but I, I think I got an A or B. Finally, you know, I, as you know, my background, you know, I've been in public schools for 32 years, you know, as a teacher, a coach, principal, superintendent. And it's the right thing to do for the kids. And I, I joined to teach kids and, and to serve kids and that's what you do. And you want to do that to the best you can and put them in the best setting. And it has grown tremendously in the 32 years that I've done this. So, that's it.
Oh, okay.
Well, I do have a child that has autism. He's 24 years old and when he was going to school, there was no such thing as an A, B, C or D. And I will tell you with the experience that we had with our child, this is definitely something that we need to have in Fargo. I will support this. I was not in support at first. And with a leader that we do have here, Dr. Gandhi, I am absolutely in favor of this. And I can tell you, the only thing that I do worry about is that the parents are involved constantly with the IEP. I hear nothing but IEP, IEP. And the only thing that scares me with the whole IEP is that it is followed. I was also a student of the Fargo Public Schools and my child suffered quite a bit because we did not have an A, B, C or D. And this really affects me emotionally due to the fact that he was my child and there wasn't a whole lot that we could do for him in, in our Fargo Public Schools at that time. So I would definitely, I'm in favor of it absolutely 100% and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I think this is a question probably best answered by Patty. We've heard some parents who have been very, very vocal in their lack of support for this Setting D. And I read the section in here where it talks about what, I, I sat in on many, many IEPs and I know that the team comes to a decision. My question is, what happens if the team determines that a child should be in Setting D and the parent says, "No"?
Very good question. As with any setting, but in particular to answer your question, it is up to the district, is up to the schools to provide FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education. We need to look to our teachers as the professionals who know how to educate children. We have to understand that parents have a vested interest in what they need for their child and what they desire for their child. Sometimes those don't line up. And so IDEA put in the parental rights for a safeguard for children. And parents can access, and again, there's anywhere from reconvening an IP meeting to having facilitated meetings where somebody from the community, they are chosen from, not necessarily the community, but they're chosen from DPI as a facilitator to help facilitate conversations, all the way up to due process where a parent might file and say, "I would take, I would like to take this to a legal route." Which is the most detrimental for all sides. But there is a pathway for that. And it's there for every student who qualifies for special education, not just the students who would qualify or an IP team would determine that Level D is the setting. So those, those are outlined on North Dakota DPI website. We hand out parental right booklets. You probably remembered them from your days as a teacher. We hand those out to parents and explain that they do have a right to disagree. Nonetheless, we have to remember that it lies in the school district's responsibility to provide the education.
I believe the law would be 94, 142, public law.
And, and it has been updated since then, but that was the original, correct? You know, you know your law.
I feel like I'm really struggling to take a yes or a no because I feel like although we have come a long way, there are still discussions I would like us to have with DHS, especially considering the reorganization. And I get that this is a school and that it is our duty to provide education. But maybe this is also an opportunity to, to tell me, for this, those students that have to be referred to a facility that can help them meet the social emotional behaviors if we cannot, is, are we providing education in those facilities? What does that look like?
Yes, we are. I will let Patty talk, but Fargo Public Schools provides instruction at Luther Hall, Prairie St. John's and several other facilities for students that are not being served currently in our, in our school.
So when a student goes to, say Prairie St. John's, we do have teachers there. The amount of time that the children spend in education is far more limited than the amount of time that a student in our school district would spend. They might have an hour, maybe two hours of class. The other time is set, is spent in the medical facility with, and rightly so, with the medical professionals dealing with the significant emotional needs of those, of those children. In a setting like Luther Hall, the time can vary. However, if a student, they are, when they enter that facility, a residential setting, again, the medical supersedes the educational at that point. And if a student is struggling, the medical side will come and remove the student from that setting in order to go into immediate therapy sessions, med checks, those types of things that not every family has to have their children go through. So when you hit beyond a separate school, when you're starting to look at residential or homebound or medical, it has gotten to that point where they say that that is, that does supersede the education and Free and Appropriate Public Education, not a place, not a location, begins to look very different than it would if a student were in a regular setting for most of the day and all the way down to even Setting D. So Setting D, again, the main focus, the education that has a setting that allows to, to be supportive. You start moving into Prairie St. John's, Luther Hall, other residential settings, the medical, uh, mental health has superseded the education. And I'm not sure if I answered your question.
I was one of the ones that voted no back in May of 2018. I didn't think we had the completeness of vision, the appropriate plan to, or necessarily even knew exactly what gaps we had in our district. I think since then, through mostly the hard work and the homework of our administration, but also our board and our new superintendent, we have crafted a new vision that is more complete and comprehensive. I think it's going to be a... I think it's going to be a, definitely a vision for the future. Not only that, but we've also now identified areas of improvement for the rest of our services we provide and the facilities we provide to our students in our community. And that continual improvement that we see in this boardroom at every regular meeting reported to us is going to continue through those services, I very strongly believe. I believe our board will ensure that. Our superintendent is carrying out those operations and that continual improvement, not just in this facility, but across our district. I think we have had extraordinary community engagement over the past two years, through the task force, through the past several weeks of engagement at Lewis and Clark and in the area there. And we've also, we've heard from parents who are concerned that we would put their kids into this, parents that are concerned that we don't have this available. And again, through listening, I believe we've, we've found opportunities to improvement of our customer experience, listening to the voice of our community. And again, finding those opportunities for continual improvement. And we've heard those commitments now from our superintendent, from our administration, to how those will go forward. Brenda Rule earlier tonight when she was addressing us noted that not everything that is legal is necessarily right and might be judged by the course of history. I do believe that this plan in front of us here tonight is right and legal, but mostly right. It's important for these kids to, that are not currently receiving these services, to receive these services in an environment that is appropriate and necessary for those services to be provided by the staff that we've identified that are highly qualified to provide those services. One is necessary, as is the other. And most importantly, I think with this complete vision, we will be meeting our mission, where we maybe haven't been as fully meeting it as we want to, to educate and empower all of our students. And so, tonight I will be voting yes. Thank you.
I see no further questions. We do have a motion on the floor. Ann Marie?
Benson?
That's one more question first. Just kidding. Yes?
Johnson?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Bryan Nelson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rodenbaker?
Yes.
Orick?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
President Nelson?
Yes, motion carries. Onto item six B.
President Nelson, I would move we enter executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy as permitted under North Dakota Century Code, Section forty-four dash oh four dash nineteen dot one.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor of entering executive session, please vote by saying yes. Any opposed, no. Okay, we will take a bit of a break for technology.
It is eight ten P M. Fargo School Board is going into the executive session, um, an executive session. All nine board members are present, as is the entire cabinet, plus Joe Loon Matherin. Mister Rodenbaker?
Thank you for the announcement, uh, the negotiation committee met last week. To go through the mediation panel's report in more detail, and also, uh, we had the time to talk to there to walk us through, again, the potential financial impact of that panel's recommending salary. Uh, we had received that preliminary analysis that suggested that in the first year of this contract, after Paul Luthers end applying it throughout all of our staff, we'd have a one point six million dollar deficit approximately. In year two, that expands to a one point seven million dollar deficit. Uh, there's no reason to think that in future years that would change course. Um, and so coming out of that, uh, committee meeting, uh, we have a few recommendations. Number one, that the negotiations committee need to sit down for one more meeting with the association to, as a show of good faith, to discuss these recommendations. Uh, that when we do so, we will be, uh, willing to talk about, uh, the other recommendations besides salary. But for the purposes of the salary, we would be sticking to our, what we've already called the best five options, especially the dollar amount. Um, if there's some interesting way that we at that table could redistribute that, that we would do in the negotiations, then, uh, perhaps we would entertain that notion. But, uh, for right now, the negotiations committee recommend that we not accept mediation as a recommendation. The final recommendation from that committee is that, uh, we send an open letter to our staff, an email, uh, coming from our president, signed by her and myself. That would explain, uh, our view of the distribution of negotiations so far, um, our positions on these remaining topics. And especially, we just have, uh, kind of making our case, uh, letting the staff know, uh, straight from our models, uh, where things have come from and where we're going to go. That is our recommendation, that's our question.
Just to clarify, as the, uh, the first recommendation was for me to sit down and discuss our negotiations, would that be to discuss the one topic that they were asking me to discuss? Or is it open up all of them?
Great question. Uh, in our view, it would be to discuss the recommendations of the mediation. And decide if we're willing to deal with those. And with it for that, and if we also committee wanted this to be another full negotiation session, uh, that obviously be introduced, the whole of it be introduced, we would just, uh, let us, uh...
Now, just to clarify on that, so in that report, correct me if I'm wrong, but was it, was your, I recommend that one more meeting, but also, are you ready to maybe, or talking about that to the last topic?
It did, and I don't think that we want, um, if, I guess if they want to bring it for it, then our answer is no.
I vote number two. The second one. I think we should write it, write it all down and have it signed from Robin and you?
So I have a draft here, so I would add that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, that'd be good. So one more clarification based on what you just said, was this a separate recommendation part of all of what you were...
This is part of all of what I was saying.
Okay, so you're saying to have a meeting, the staff just determine the conditions, but then only agree to further negotiate salaries?
Well, not necessarily.
Okay, so we're just saying, we're not negotiating any of it, we're just having one meeting to say, we're, we're thinking of our best possible?
So with regards to the new system, do you have a conversation about that, clarify that, are any proposals was to have the days, or tie up? Whereas they kind of force that into a conversation about emergency, uh, process classes. Um, let's talk about that, if you can, as you see in the letter here, um, you feel that you can pull that, pull this conversation out, and drop the topic of the capital days. Let's, let the administration and the association and the safety committee look out how we use workers, let's make them back to the association. Or, uh, we're wanting to do that. Sure, um, sorry, I think, I didn't, I didn't mean to touch on that project. Uh, I think maybe one of, maybe it would be better to allow board members an opportunity to read the letter, and then have the conversation about what the potential outcome could be at the negotiation table. Because what if the F D A's willing to bring proposals up there to give us that first, that's the thing that's just consideration. So what does the F D A have to do with that?
The only thought I have, I think the letter is good, um, but would we put in for certain associations, would we put F D A there? Everyone underfunds F D A doesn't matter. We go, we talked about association, when the association was unable to meet, um, but in the first paragraph it says Fargo Education Association and the process is F D A. So we should either call the F D A just to clean up a F D A associated with it?
I would tell them, uh, we're not negotiating, we're not negotiating, like, oh, oh, oh.
So, that's, that's all, I think what is great. Yeah. I would also say, I got a couple things, so, when you're in here, is italic, or is it in Times Magazine?
Correct, uh, so it's a work on format, it's a subject of review, like, lots of experience, stuff, and the delta, and, and, and just relates, sort of, to what we're talking about.
And that's my, that's my first question, my second is free. Um, I, we might wanna clean up in the third paragraph after Cas- Cas County District Court. It's the, uh, first, Rebecca, work on that sentence, will ya? Uh, the third paragraph?
So, third paragraph, after Cas County District Court, what is this?
Well, at, not only at the F D As, but resulting from, uh, by case filed by the F D A. So, that, that's easy enough to figure. I do like the context of the letter, um, and the reason I do is, it's gonna go to everybody, and right now, the board has, it's basically become, been pretty moved on discussing this. And there are a lot of untruths that are being purposely circulated, and so this, this is comprehensive, and I think it's a, the right approach. Now, what's, what comes out of this, John, is hopefully they agree to meet, um, and then they might not, just based upon the salary proposal. But that could certainly be discussed, I think, I'd like to hear from you. Okay, a few items, yes. One, agree with removing the last sentence in paragraph two. Um, I think it's so that it sounds a bit angry, so it's just not needed. Um, cleaning up the language in paragraph three, tightening that up a little bit. Um, paragraph four, the board is, has time, and obviously you're fully considered a path forward, and is willing to meet with the F D A. I wasn't sure if we wanted to, um, specify, you know, like, meet once, or if we're just leaving it, leaving it open like this, it's, I, and then, um... And then I guess I was wondering regarding salary, is that the only area where we say that we stand by our, uh, position? I, I'm just wondering if we want to, uh, if we want to illustrate our, our stance there, as if, at least where I'm reading it, it's that, well, yeah, we stand by our salary proposal, but willing to negotiate with the, well, it does say we're willing to negotiate with the distribution of the dollars. But just wasn't sure if we wanted to, to say that last, but I, I think it's important. There's so much, I, I really can't remember.
Who thought of you? Um, I'm just gonna go through the pieces. I noted, please just note that I am solely providing the feedback and consideration for the board, just trying to be aware of the potential pitfalls. Even though I think no letter is gonna be the perfect letter, that it needs reasons, that it needs to get feedback, um, you know, including that little language at the start of the third paragraph about why the process was delayed, seems a little sticky to you. Um, I think that it definitely not became the high road, but just wanna make you aware of that, that pitfall. I also think an administration did help compose some of those letters, both from John and Robin. I also want the board to be really cautious in knowing that everything you put in here, they will use and use for or against you in future negotiations. So one of the pieces of language that administration put in here, that I wanna make sure the board is comfortable with that, is on the second page, where we talk about, right under the proposal information, the board does not oppose staff using emergency leave as a result of injury by a student. I put that because of, uh, a lot of the language that's been used in public here. That is what the administration believes. However, we also think we need to see a safeguard the district, which we try to clarify in the next paragraph, against the use of that clause. But I don't want the board to just sign off on something without knowing that that clause is in that team, against you in future negotiations. And then my only other piece of feedback is semantic, which is, instead of a couple of words, as the board believes, maybe say, it is the board's position.
Uh, as far as, take it to your paragraph, I, this will also be used, as, as a, as a public statement, and we are taking, I'm not, I mean, we are taking the warning from that, that we're not gonna talk back, so, just one word. But along those lines, even if that didn't, I mean, we, we just say that, you know, our intent was to, you know, move into this other conversation, and then not take a position on the other conversation? Because really, we're then allowing this to be negotiated by taking, you know?
Definitely, it is my opinion that if people believe it, of it, because they are associating, they're associating adding qualities of emergency leave, which you're giving the person, not the faculty, and I know that that's right, it's right, it's true, it's true. But if we do believe that, for instance, if you lost a job, they should not have emergency leave, and they deserve emergency leave, then let's say it, and then let's say we're taking that clause.
And that is something else that is being used against us, with collective messaging, I, I like it. David, did you?
There was one other thing, um, fourth paragraph, you say additionally, the board wanted to provide, that's for you and, uh...
So that fourth paragraph, the line that David that he was just talking about, I think we're telling them at the beginning, in the beginning paragraph already the purpose of the letter. So I don't know if we need to state it more than once in that in that fourth paragraph. It doesn't hurt anything, but it kind of sounds like that's that's almost the start of a letter. You could add this. Yeah, yeah. And then my other question was when would this letter go to the staff? ASAP? And would we need a motion to send it? Yeah, would we need a motion to send it? I don't think we really do. If you back to Rebecca's change on number four, I think the purpose in the beginning is providing an update about negotiation. And paragraph four is talking about the update from mediation panel. So I think it is two separate um updates. I'm fine either way. I was just thinking that's why they're doing that. It's okay either way. It is obvious to the others why we're stating that. Jennifer? Um okay, so that paragraph three. But do we highlight this? Uh could we just say how many detail meetings we had and then what was the phrase, as a request, or we want to say that before that first sentence, or it's not the first thing we need? Could we say that we met the three times? Yes, that's where I'm going with that. I do get room for point oh two, you know, with that, but I mean, really, there was no reason why they can't do that between the two of us. I mean, it would've took an hour. More to it. Well, they have reasons for not meeting. So um but we could have a combination of a little bit of what Jennifer was talking about with this kind of outlining the facts in terms of when to imagine them just saying that. You know, additionally, the process was delayed. I don't have a problem if it's used in that one. I I would my board would still have a softer opinion to that, but this is this is going to be a public communication. And this is our only chance to really say that if this is not related to that.
So along with the time, the question is, where are we moving on to some stuff? Meeting with the executive committee is a census. That's it. If they were to then have a negotiation, they'd need to do that in closure on this mediation, what the mediation. I see a lot of that. So then after this meeting, David's still here, I will motion say that we want to begin. I sent an email to uh David and Jennifer then also expressing that.
Absolutely. Can we just, I and I don't, it doesn't matter to me either way, but just know everyone is going on board. Is it a good time to send it in your eyes while everyone's on break or waiting? That's just what we need to come and tell.
Staff feedback on the board. It would be our ten thirty minutes.
But we. Well, if it is.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the letter.
Sorry, it's just need a soft process because the logistics of it is what we need to know. Who's email address do you actually want it to come from? Because that is a nineteen feature that we will have to work on. There is a very, very limited amount of people we can send an all day. So if it's if you want it to come from F. Robbins email, we will have to work with IT staff to make that happen. If you're wanting it to come from my email under your name, whatever, but we need to know who specifically you want it to come from. What exact time you want it delivered. If it's not tomorrow, you guys are just getting launched. Changes, those have to be made. If you want to be working tomorrow. So I mean, we just have to think of those logistics as well. Yeah, absolutely. If whatever you want is you want to know that we know specifically how you want to send it.
Well, just a question, whoever accounts gets the send out from them, are they going to use the bulk replies to have them call it out?
Potentially. I mean, if if they would reply, just hit reply, it would automatically just go whoever went to send it.
That's a good question for IT staff, but do we have a future disapproval so that we can reply at all?
You can't reply at all to all staff. Just know that it's it doesn't work that way. I I I wanna talk a little bit about the timing because it's the sooner the better, in my opinion. Um and maybe just let David know, um we will be, we we realize tomorrow is a non-school day, but we value the time. And so if you wanna give your staff a heads up, we'll be sending, we'll be sending an email in the morning. And I think the sooner the better in the morning. It's even better. Yep, absolutely. Just want to take a moment. I understand that it's a productive letter. And I have lovely things to say about my class students during the day, and I just read this letter. What does that like, am I then taken away from my time with students or how it was a class to you in the classes of the day? Right.
Not if you're professional. Uh you gotta separate. No, we're anything. You get it's gonna be a little bit. It's no different. I believe that.
I would say if studies show productivity goes down when you're doing things like this at any corporation. So yes, there is all, but the reality is it affects.
And it is true.
I think Monday morning would be fine. Um and I think that what's in here, we're just clarifying. We aren't telling them devastating news that they're not getting a raise or they're not getting, you know, anything. We're just clarifying and to compare those answers. So I think they shouldn't. I mean, yes, it couldn't be impactful. They're gonna go, oh, wow, I didn't know that. So I don't think it necessarily would be such a negative as an eye opener. I agree with Christie on that. Uh I I'm wondering, do we want to provide anything at the end of this uh letter about if pointing individuals to um board email addresses, it's a standout. You just inviting feedback. So I I mean, and I know that most most individuals would know that they can find that that we are going to add it to do what we want to do. But what I was wondering in doing that, would that uh help address potentially the response of staff that we're going to do that?
I am. So um number one, because earlier in the negotiation process, we were discussing, so that the negotiating process. So we might have heard that, even though we're sharing it, but at this point, um. I have a couple of other things within the strategy that I'm like specifically on this topic. You know, I think one of the things is, well, I think like there is there are rules and outlooks. I think that you can say if all apply for just an email address, so they don't have to be in Marie's. And if not, maybe somebody who's from the board, uh please do not respond to the board's sector here. What are your thoughts? I mean, just um give us a look at that. When we're done with this topic, I have a couple of other questions that I should ask. So I think my two other questions is um questions are, I think the board should really consider, do you have a vision for what it looks like if you do it with them? Because what happens if your expectation of that maybe is very different from theirs? And I think we should talk through what it would be um with the premise that you accept the mediation recommendations are all or nothing. And that we disagree with. We don't have any sort of expectation on what we have to do after that mediation comes up. There's disagreement on the path forward, but we have expectation that we should communicate it when you reach out about having.
Maybe where you struck out, we struck out the in the two, three, fourth paragraph. Same mediation panel and to meet again, our our hope for this meeting is to do that. And then. That's the point where it should be.
Well, I think it's like, you know, we almost. If you want to be down to this level, it's not just a question. You know, it's my understanding that you don't need to. The problem is say that you, you know, whoever is acting as chair for them are gonna put an agenda together. So when you send your email communication to them, indicate here is the agenda that I'm putting together. If you have an alternative agenda, suggestions, send it to me so we can have a three or four agenda. And that's how you.
So I think to Reebok's point, what I hear you saying is much like what happened last time we. That was a conversation around if you wanna accept one of the five, say, recommendations in mediation, we do that, or do you have to accept all or nothing? And so if their interpretation is all or nothing, and we're saying, no, you can actually assume, you know, sort of one or two of the five. Do we have any sort of like plan or documentation that says that? Am I understanding?
I think you kind of worked with that in some places. We all are not used to the fact finding commissions to report. You either accept it or you don't. Mediation is our own issue. So we can do it however long we want to do it. But under state codes, when the fact finding representation comes down, you either wholeheartedly accept it or you don't. And that's what I feel you know. So it didn't come on mediation side. It came from the Romo and companies that sell.
So did the FDA also agree to that position that that the mediation, that that was fact finding was all or nothing and mediation was weak foot?
Never came up on mediation. It was all about fact finding. It was like how fact finding. And.
Historically, when you guys have went to mediation, there's all sorts of things that have happened once mediation panel has come back. Um sometimes it has been accepted fully because it's always a great recommendation. Sometimes you go back to the table. So okay, if this one was great, let's talk about this one more. So it isn't written down and there's kind of plethora of ways of what is what has happened once it's come back. So there has to be just one step.
Good thing for the board to consider, you will do the agenda development process and have to choose. And don't put salary on the agenda. When they come back, it's a it's a long time. Will the board allow that time to refer? Then the second conversation, when they come back, they go over here on um the agenda which is the remaining topic. And I did ask David Mark about that, make sure with the board what that report was about. Uh two last days starting this evening. Starting this evening, if they wanna put those on the agenda, how would the board? So I I would think we would put salary on the agenda um to have opportunity to say we are speaking about this.
But in your letter, you're saying that you're willing to talk about it potentially, look at a different distribution. So you you are willing to do that, yes?
Right.
We have a way to uh to apply it. So perhaps we add that actually.
No, I I think I think that would be a problem. But we have salary.
Uh just for the record, David Paulson is part of the meeting right now.
So on that agenda, we would have salary, we would have new system, we would have professionally used as. Identify this topic.
One of the one of the naples in mediation panel is they did say we should talk about, didn't they, Dave? We should talk about that. Um but that's not in the.
I would recommend that.
And during the meeting, David, did you not follow our.
Okay, so I will, after this meeting, if David's still here, talk to him in person. I will send an email probably tonight to Jennifer, David, LCC, and I love him. Say that we. Here's our closing comments. I would just that. The Christmas of the year, as soon as I really find it. And then I will be working with um and we will go with.
Finalize on Monday. And I um. Finalize on Monday, just send it out. David, was you on a wait to talk to David and then go and pull the water over? No. And we don't let them know in advance.
I will not talk to them.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say just go home. All right, perfect. You know, not stating things that uh.
I agree with Jim. I would just wanna make sure that the negotiation committee looks at it. Um you know, Jackie, Doug, John Lynn, myself, and I, you know, sat down and started having things to weigh from what we remembered to them in the past. Just wanna make sure some of the processes are right and what we're referencing to be the last offer from the FDA, we were going through the binder. Put another set of eyes on that, uh I think would be great because I don't want to say that the last proposal said X and that's actually not the case. I don't wanna put the board in a complimentary position.
You got enough direction there, Mr. Rodenbiker?
I agree about these.
Because we have to jeopardize other meetings on Tuesday. Okay.
Uh my question is, maybe we should, um does there need to be board action on or setting up another meeting? There is more action. Very prominent that for the board, so we're not taking an action on other board. Last thing, these draft letters are privileged, so they're handed back to you if you wanna lose it or please don't. Thank you.
Okay. Are we finished, Mr. Rodenbiker? It is eight fifty P M. Um all the members that started in this executive session are present with the exception of Dave Paulson. Executive session has ended.
Board of Education is back in session. I am going to take some presidential privilege here, and I am just going to ask that we adjourn the meeting now since we're all really tired. Uh we do have a written president's report that was handed out. Um other than that, our next regular board meeting is December tenth. The meeting is adjourned.